We are that committee. We'll introduce ourselves properly. And I'll start with that first before welcome. I'm Figile Kasa, who is Chairperson of this Portfolio Committee for Cooperative Governance and Traditional Affairs.
Good morning, Goyamore. Tumalanga. I am Kunikayambumza, a member of the Portfolio Committee on Cooperative Governance and Traditional Affairs. Thank you.
Good morning, Goyamore. I'm Gisela Opera. I'm a member of the Reporter Field Committee and I'm also an owner of the North Cape.
Goyamore, everyone. I'm Becky Hadewe.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Olanimsi Mango. I'm also a member of this Portfolio Committee of Cooperative Governance and Traditional Affairs. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Pritipindesire Klabanchaba. I'm a member of this Committee of Traditional Affairs. Thank you.
No, thank you, thank you very much, Chairperson of the Portfolio Committee on Cooperative Governance and Traditional Affairs. My name is Khanya Treza. I'm also a member of this Portfolio Committee. Thank you very much.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dikelidireko and I'm a member of the Committee. Thank you.
Maybe let's ask because I can pick a sense that the phones might disturb us. Please deal with them. We are here in the Northern Cape as the Portfolio Committee. Our agenda is provincial participation, public hearings on the Independent Municipal Demarcation Authority Bill. We assume that there might have been some people who came before us from Parliament to help you first to have a copy of the bill. Number two, familiarize yourselves with the contents of the bill. So the bill itself was tabled to Parliament on the 15th of June 2022. So it's not a document that is completely new. And immediately after it was tabled, it was sent to the committee, the committee that you see before you. Invitations were sent to the National House of Traditional and Coysan House at national level for them to make submissions and other critical stakeholders. Those invitations were hearings in writing. We just started on the public hearings, oral public hearings. I think a week ago, we're in the Eastern Cape. You are the second province to be visited by the Portfolio Committee. All we are looking for is your inputs into the bill. And you are the ones who are going to speak, would be listening. And we have got a team of administrators from Parliament. They will be taking every message that comes from yourselves. We would process the bill, would be going around the country up to the 29th of August. And after the 29th, would then go back to Parliament, sit as a committee, look at every contribution that could have been made, discuss it as a committee. After that, if we agree with what is coming out, would present that to the National Assembly, Parliament, for a debate and decision. Once that decision is taken, the bill would be taken to the National Council of Provinces. They might come back as well to say, this is the product or the outcome of all these other engagements. So the National Council of Provinces will do the same. Go around the country and ultimately, if that is approved by them, it will come back for adoption and ultimately signed by the President in order for Independent Municipal Demarcation Authority Bill to be an act of Parliament. So in other words, it's going to be a long process. So where we were in the Eastern Cape, some people were saying, oh, we were surprised by this. We didn't have much time to read. This is almost like a start of the process. So if it happens that you think there's something that you might miss when you are here, you can still write back to us. I think at the end, you would be given the emails where you can communicate in writing, where you can make whatever inputs. So I'm saying now we are here, we want to hear you. But beyond here, you'll still be free to make inputs in writing up to the 29th of August. So we don't want anybody to come here and complain. So this is the start of the process almost. So that is what is... Now I'll just outline the objectives of the bill so that you understand. This bill in summary is trying to consolidate all issues related to demarcation of outer boundaries of municipalities and delimitation of wards. Some of these issues were scattered all over in many acts that govern local government. They are now being consolidated. The reasons why we are consolidating them is out of experience by the many boards that came. Out of experience by complaints from communities about demarcation, protests from communities about demarcation, court cases about demarcation. In other words, this issue has caused many people to complain. And out of that, a decision was taken by the board to approach the minister to have one piece of legislation that will coordinate all these issues that relates to demarcation of municipalities and wards. So that is why we have got this. The objectives of this bill are as follows. Interpreter was waiting for me to come to that. Oh, you want to interpret what I've said? Please.
Hey, Kina, Modula Stulo Committee, Nda Tefiki Le Kasa. Malukwama Ngasese Ayikitisi Ze. Jakar Satsiriboninere Satsirikrumetimulautsumo O. Yakanpoya National House of Traditional Affairs. Korilukhonochu Obona. Lu Shebe Lu Atlaatlele Lu Na Lukhonochunale. Le Kichoka Oni. Itla Remora. Ota Bo Otse Iwa. Kubuse Twa Kubalamenten Kabe. Let's add, Si La Bo Fe Lo Le Lu Kori Kilo Onalele Le Si Weng. La Koi Reta ReKhonachunsa Di Twa Elo Taro. Ki Ufi Ta Kadi 29. Ke Morhe Reta Be Retaya ReKhonachu. Di Te Di Bu Se Twa Kubemora Ku Kubalamenten. Di Ta Be Di Bu Ela Ku NA. Adi Ta Ku NA. Habase Tahu Di Sheva Le Bonne Bababadumalana. Then Remora. Itla Fite La Ku NSOP. Lette Enakwe Di Fi Ta Ku NSOP. Di Ta Be Di Bu Ela Kabe Mobatu. Ri To Guto Ma Ikuto Sa Sgulosa Gudasagisletzimfano Gumpen. Ki To Guto Alona. Ma Ikuto Alona. Ba Ahitibang Limulautsumo Onu Erbu Ankau. Committee Kia Kopta.
You want... Oh, Africans.
Goyamore, I'm the chairperson of this committee. I'm Figile Kasa. This is the Reporter Field Committee for the Unavantkeke Municipal Afbakenings Overhead. And here the committee is specific, stand be kind as the same work in the regering and traditional saken. So here the wetgeving is al verledi jar 15 juni 2022 vorgele. And this is a long process that here the wetgeving can start. And then he can say he had the mint time. By forbeeld om here the wetgeving vandaag behoorlijk te kon deergaan verinzete. Moenee bekommert wees die hij toch steeds tijd tot en met die 29ste Augustus 2023 om gescrewe inzette te lever oor hier die specifieke wetgeving. So indien hij voel dat hij de mint tijd gehaatet om hier die wetgeving vandaag te kon bestudier, dan uit hij nog tijd tot 29 Augustus hier de jaar om gescrewe inzette te lever. So moet het die blijven bekommert wees nie. En moenee klaan en proteste anteken nie. Da is nog tijd om de deergeldeer te gaan. En van een andering wat vandaag gebeur kan hij dan ook die inzette lever. Dan is het belangrijk om nie te weet dat hier is die tweede provincie waar hier die wet vorgele wordt. Die eerste provincie was the Ouskap. And daar heet het voorgekomen dat mensen geseit, hellek beki mint tijd gehat. So darum is het belangrijk dat hij dit weet. So here is the begin van the process. Here he can geleentijd krijg om hij inzette te lever op hier die voorgestelde wetsontwerp. Dan al gaan al hier die inzette geneem word naar die nationale vergadering toe van die parlement. Dan gaan het besprek word. And now that da besprekes, dan gaan het aan die Nationale Raad van Provincies toe. As the da goed gekeren besprek is, gaan het praten aan die president en dan wordt het onderteken. So here is a boy a long process. This is the begin davon. And the doel van hier die wets, van hier die publieke veroor vandaag is dat hij hij se kan se en hij inzet kan lever met betrekking tot hier die proces. Bye, danke.
No, I'm not sure if you are done. There are many languages here that get spoken. It looks like you are done. Now let me read the aims and objectives of the bill. The first objective is to provide for the establishment, functions and powers of the Independent Municipal Demarcation Authority. We agreed to get, but that must be interpreted each sentence.
May Tuma Mahulu Amulautsumo O. Ki Hu Ta Hu Toma Butati. Ilin AI AM AD. Kilo Onali Bag. Ki Hu Toma Butati Authority.
So the doelwitte van hier die wetsontwerp zal nou sin versein vorgele word en sin versein an oor getol word, sentence by sentence, sin verseinvee getol word van die voorgestelde doelwitte dat nou gaan se na Afrikaans toe als we het nou gaan tol.
I am not sure. Oh, you're coming up. Because there's somebody at the back who is either saying there's no interpretation of Zitswana or yes.
Kubonachalake Tukomra Ku Kalo. Kunalimutu O Tla Lu Sangkur. Kubonala Iketa Kona Motolo Ki Kozamara Nu Juastwana.
What is missing? Is it Tswana or is it Soto?
Sin Tente Ki Ing E Taileng. Agis Tswana Kozakis Soto. Pu Eli Wonangi Karahayo Ali Utisisi. Ki Se Tswana Kozakis Soto. Doloko Eli Watlan Ki Stwa Naxakas Soto.
No, he was trying to help us to say generally people here, if we use English and Sotwana, you and Africans will understand.
Onale Ga Kuri Tu Sa Kuri Tla Lu Se Za Kuri. Batu Baba Mobungsi Babon. Nefaila Kuri Bu Akasuku. Re Ga Kuru Akasukuwa Le Sotwana, Le Africans. English Le Africans. Morele Sotwana.
Yes, but of course, talking to the meeting general, if it happens that there's anybody who has got a problem of interpretation, we have got people here to do that. But it looks like generally there's agreement. I will use English, that it would be Africans. Yes, it looks like.
Modula Stulo Kua Bonachalakuri. Mo, Je To Kona Kuba Se Kua. Arre Feta Kuba Se Kua. Then Putla Translate Ona. Kua African Se. Kubonachalaka Palo. Gunutiba Ona Jakari Duti Ja.
The next part, oh, you want to interpret that? Okay.
It will voorkom as of the grootste gedeelte van die veroor, die gewoor vandaag, die publiek. Afrikaans spreekend is en Zitswana spreekend is. So indien enige iets die de voorzitter of de commiteer of ene van die floraaf in Engels gesegan word, zal dit getol word na Afrikaans toe en ook Zitswana. Indien jeelig koi sprekers is of enige andere tal, ons zit in julle span tolke wat hij kan bijstaan, voel vrij om in hij moedertal hij se te se. Dankie. Net Engels en Afrikaans ja. Maar als daar andere talen is ze graag verstaan, is hier tolke wat kan bijstaan.
The second objective is to provide for the criteria and procedures for the determination and redetermination of municipal boundaries.
Die tweede doelwit van hier die wetsontwerp is om te kijken naar de criteria voor die bepaling en herbepaling van municipale areas, die afbakening daarvan. So this is the tweede doelwit van hier die wetsontwerp.
The third one, to provide for the delimitation of wards.
Delimitation of wards. Delimitation. Words. Ah, wards. In Kosi Kaku. Oh, she was talking to me, I'm sorry. My apologies. The other doel, the other doelwit is die onbondeling, die delema tasi van weiker. In Engels wards, weiker.
The fourth one would be to provide for the establishment of the Demarcation Appeals Authority.
Die feedie insal wees die bepaling van die afbakening, demarcation in Engels, van die verschillende weiker.
To provide for, that's the fifth one, for the municipal capacity assessments.
Die vijftiend is om te bepal wat voor die huidige municipale afbakeningsraad is.
And any other matters related to that.
And enige andere saken wat daar aan verwant kan wees, wat daar mee sampe kan.
So that is basically the objectives of this bill.
This is basist die doelwitte van hier die wetsontwerp.
Before we then proceed, this is your meeting. I'll outline the processes. But let's allow Council of Ward One, Councilor Soli, to come forward and welcome us on behalf of the mayor.
Here is hier die publieke veroor. This is now here beert om te praat. Maar net voordat hij hij plekken gaan innemen om hij inzette te lever, gaan Raadse Soli voor hij verwelkomme met hij toesprek.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning to all firstly. Allow me to welcome all members, honorable members of parliament. I am Councilor Soli Abel from Ward One, Rosdale. It is my, it is an honor to welcome today, to have you all here. Honorable members of parliament, the media, members of the broader communities. All of you are welcome here today. Let us make our inputs on this ball. Feel free to do it. And so I welcome all of you here today. I thank you.
Goyamore, bye, danke dat hier is vandaag, genamens die achbar leder van die parlement en al die verschillende gemeenschappen wat hier vandaag ten woerig is. Bye, bye, danke dat die parlement hier is. En dankie aan hij dat hier is, voel vrij as eblief om hij inzette vandaag te lever. Hier bij hier die publieke veroor, bye, danke.
The order of the proceedings. First, we have said, we have got interpreters from Parliament in a number of languages. That we find anybody who wants to wear. And...
No.
And...
No.
And the sign language is here. And zoon or koon is here. I'm trying to say anybody who might feel comfortable to speak in whatever of those languages. You are free to do so because we'll have interpretation. So Agukomto Bopelile Gleyo. Ubate Te Ulu Emilomnye. Teta Eni. Collega Ku. Now the order.
Nobody is compelled to speak a language that is he or she is not comfortable with. The person can address the meeting in a language that is more comfortable in.
An Afrikaans het weer eens. All of van hij is welkom om in die tal waar hij gemaklik is om hijzelf een uit te druk, te praat. Wat ik probeer se is koi en ku tolke van die parlement en julle span tolke. Zulu as eblief voel vrij om inzette lever in die tal waar hij gemaklik is.
Eh, Imani Ge, those are good.
Can wait a bit?
I got Kali Galoku in Tangani.
The meeting has not yet started.
And it's not going to be like that. We are not going to raise hands, points of order and all of those. We don't allow those here. This is Parliament. So allow you to say anything. Will not stop you when your turn comes for you to speak. So in other words, if there's anything you wanted to raise, you will raise it when you are here. This is the order that we are going to follow. Now, you want to interpret that? Okay.
It is your meeting, sir. You tell me.
No, let's not interpret that. The order is going to be like this. We will allow you to speak now so that we start with the meeting. I will not say you are out of order. Nobody must say, yeah, you are out of order. You have a right to be whatever, whatever, out of whatever. You are free to speak. But we are going to take about 10 speakers per that round. Each speaker would be allowed to speak for three minutes. So in other words, you must arrange the most important points that you think must be raised. We are not forced to repeat as well what other people have said. So I'll give you numbers. I'll give you numbers. You are number one. Number two, those who wanted to, you can take your first seat in number two. Any other hand up to 15. I'm looking at your hands. Oh, you must interpret. Interpret, I'm taking hand.
So here is hier vergaderings, as we said, hij is nou aan die woord. Maar hier is die parlement. So hier is een zekere orde waar volgens hier die procedure vandaag gaan geskit. So eerstens, ons gaan 15 van hij op een slag die geleentijd geheen om te praat. Elk persoon krijg drie minuten om zijn inzet te lever bij die microfoon. Oos praat nie gelijk nie. Hij kom foren toe, hij steek hij hand op. Die voorzitter wijst aan wat er persoon mag kom sit. Hij sit in een rij. Elk persoon praat voor drie minuten. En as eblief, moenee haar hal wat reeds gese is nie. Als iemand iets geseit, en hier is op hij lijsie ook, dan hoeveel hij dit niet haar hal nie. Dit is al opgeteken word en het zal an gesprek word. Dit is dan reeds gese.
Eh, no, I'm calling you two. Are you speaking? Yes, you are number three. Any take us, number four, number five, numbers up to 15. I want the hands.
Jena, jena, jena.
You are number four.
Hij kan hij hand opstek as hij een spreekbeert wil eh. Ik ga niet volgens die handen wat op is geheek voor je geleentijd om te gaan sit. Zo ek het handen in die licht norig om mensen hand te wijst wat kan kom sit voor een spreekbeert.
So far, we only have two, four, five. You come in, number six.
Number six? Iber die hand op is stiek.
Number seven. Eh, maybe for now, let's start with number one.
Goed, ons gaan begin met nummer één.
Check. Greetings, members of the parliament. My name is Evangelist Larry Hamner. Born and bred from Cape Town. A young adult that is familiar with the Pan-African Congress, that is familiar with the Avricle, the ANC. What's happening here today is our people, our fathers. They trusted the ANC to bring signs for our communities. We are still living in apartheid. I'm there in Kanon Island. What is happening there is the boer is still taking over our whole road. There are, there are koi suns, signs in that farms. But nothing is coming from that one. Oos gaan dood daarbij. Oos wordt verdrik die die boer. Helle wanger lande. Halle verdrik os. Die politiek wat is voor stem, kom je volgens die eh nie? Oos sit zo'n kracht. Oos sit zo'n water. Oos is os dieren. Oos drink. Oos loop uit. Oos het die toilet gerewen nie. Niks toilet gerewen nie. Maar os wild en os bring van anderinge an di mo kaitet, an di mo kaisen, van road. An hierste plek, die koi san mensen, man, os is gerop hoeka. Os is hoeka gerop. Oos blij nie achter spien. Oos bekli voor een land wat die met os staan nie. Oos sit in een situatie waar osse mensen dood. Oos blij in klein grondjes, ba die die boer gaan kom in een skip. Helle toes van moer, helle toes mensen van kracht. Helle, helle toes dood gemaakt, sus niks. Helle toes aye gronde, oze gronde boer, os op. Voor een stukje brood en is onder die brood lijn. Da kom blij os in een plek, sus 50 hectare blangenie, blouse kop. Oos blij daar op een hoopie. As die boer osse mensen klaag gebreek het. Da kom me lossele ose mensen om te kom dood. Kier op kier kom die mannen, die, die parlement naar oos toe, maar niks beheven, gebeven aan ose goed, ose kind is wild voor kracht. Daas die kracht daan nie, daas die licht in die plek staan twintig jaar. Ek het een brief geschrijf voor die president, voor ose bekleeal van twintig ninntien, maar die plek staan twintig jaar, ose groot mensen sterf. Zone kracht, zone gesyverde water, wat denk julle als die, als die parlement van julle is zelf? Julle vat ose wilds voor wat? Voor wat man, ose mensen, ose koi san mensen, nie net was ose tal gevat die. Nie net was ose identiteit gevat die. Maar oes blij in die achterkan van die spien. Waan net toe gaan os? Julle hi voor os erfies, klein erfies. Maar die boer het gekom en ose mensen doodgemaakt voor ose gron. Die section twenty-one, dik alle gronde, maar nou bescheren ose section twenty-five om gronde vast te slaan. Is wrong. Why are you, why are you guys killing us? Why should we die without the bill, the Bill of Rights says? We every South African have the right for electricity, for clean water, for, for toilets and our children's education, but nothing twenty, how many years after we've won? No, it's wrong man.
Yeah. Number two. Oh, before number two, interpret.
Just a short summary of the bits and afrikans. Uh, just want to say, um, I'm Evangelist and I'm from born and bred in Cape Town. And I just want to say to you that people came here in ships and they raped us. We live under the breadline. There on blousse kop, we all live on a heap. We live like bonulki, also opakunopi. For twenty years, in twenty nineteen, we wrote a letter. We've been fighting. You take our votes for what? You take our votes for what? You take our votes, you take our language, you take our identity? No man, we always get the short straw. We always put the short end of the stick. Ach no man, you should be ashamed of yourself. You give us the small portions of land man. First you start with section twenty-one, now section twenty-five, the Bill of Rights says we need clean water, electricity and sanitary water. We live like animals. Ach no man. We need electricity and water, we've been fighting for too long. Thank you.
Eh, it looks like when people are introducing themselves, it would be as well to tell us from which ward and so that we can at least have a sense of the spread.
Voorstel, als het blijf say van wat er weik van afkomstig is, als i enorm say van wat er weik is die afkomstig en wil i ook say of i die wetzontwerp ondersteen en of i die wetzontwerp nie ondersteen nie.
Yes, number two.
Ik groot allemaal. Ik sta nie zo, maar ik het niks, maar ik het iets om met allemaal te decanteren. Ek is Lorinda Isaaks, van vijftig hectare. Is bij Kanonland. Die plek is miss nou twintig jaar zo's mijn vorige broer, dat gestig het is twintig jaar gestig. Ik het een probleem. Ik waarneef nie, eh, die samenleving, die samenleving die apartheid. Maar my roeping is vandaag voor ons, as vijftig hectare se gemeente, om daar hooi, daar kracht, te minste een voorbeeld in ose plekte. Begin te minste voor ons met die elektriciteit. Ose het bije groot oes daar zo. Daas oes en daar is miss tekope wat daar rondloop, daas die toiletjes, daas die waterlineen nie. Daas die projecten nie. Ik het voor i PWP voor twee maanden gewerk. Unbetaalbare twee maanden. Ik moes eh, bluecard gekreid. Oos mensen kort, ons kort werk. Daar is die werk voor ons, ie is daar zo nie. Oos is, ik weet die wordt os afgeskip om met ons maar in die island wies, ose is onder die boeren nie. Maar ons het gebesleid, ons wil op ons eie wies, ons voor werk voor ons. Zo wat ons voor ons ose kind is, daas met rikoland wat zo onder werk sit. My roeping is vandaag voor, dat daar te minste voor anr, dat is die verandering, zien dat ja bij ons. Wens voor ons gemeente, ons wens ons staan bij me. Waar daar miss te minste, want die, die is daar, die boer met alles eerweke, break ons. Halle vat twintig en halle vat, halle vat duitet, ons het iets nodig om te kan lever. Dus wat ik als het blijf vooran my roeping is, voor dit als het blijf dankie.
Eh, I, I only hope we took her name because we couldn't hear that. Lorinda. Okay.
I just want to say, as my previous, eh, 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 person who spoke said, for twenty years, we've been asking for government to at least give us electricity. That's the least we're asking for, please. Our community is full of tekope, duckets. I worked for two months, no pay, no bluecard. My calling today is, I'm standing in front of you and I'm asking you, please, can we see some change? Please, can we see some change? I work, we will work together, we will stand together. All I'm asking you is please, Lorinda Isaaks, I'm standing in front of you from fifty hectares, let us be an example. At least give us electricity. Thank you.
Eh, number three.
Goedemorgen, eh, parlementsleden, ambtenaren en alle bezoekers in die David Krepper Rechtsstreeksgebied. Ek is Godfrey George, raadslet van wijk vijf. Eh, eerstens, die doel van die dag wat i helle hier is, praat ik oor die afbakening. Die afbakening wat i voor ons kom afbaken in die geografische wijke. Wat ose gemeenschappen benadeel en voor ons as hot councilers, ze werk op die grond bije moeilijk maak. Ek praat especially van hot vijf Louis Wilweg, ek is die hot counselor en dan krijg die IEC krijg die afbakening van, van i helle af, as die parlement. Die afbakening benadeel ose gemeenschappen en ose, en ose David Krepper Rechtsstreeksgebied met dat ti wijk vijf wordt twee straten afgebaken na hot vortien toe, wat Lamersdrift, Karros, Leerkrans, Tchikulelo is. Skierlijk wordt afgebaken na hot twelft toe, wat Raaswater, Lesserding en Swartkop is. As ons, as mens rechtdenking is, gehe ons amper desenzesjonderd mensen een skierlijk weg na hot twelft toe, waar ons kan, een gemeenschap wil, eh, moet geweest het, kom die afbakeningstraat en ik kom verdeel een gemeenschap aan drie tot vier wijke. En wat bije, bije, bije verkeerd is. Die afbakeningstraat vergemoeilijk ons as raadsletse taak zo om ose mensen service die levering wil toe te gehe of toe te pas. En ik voel dat die afbakeningstraat vat ons weer terug naar die apartheidjaar toe. Ik voel die afbakeningstraat gaan laten een tijd voor ons, kom grenslenen neersit en ose ei, in een wijk gaan het later drie grenzen is. Van as wijk twelft, hot vortien en hot vijf. My kind blij net is straat van mij af, maar mij, maar hij of zij bewoord in een ander wijk. Die service die levering is zo. As daar hijse moet gebouwerd van die gaveman, dan moet die een straat skip van die bewoord in een, under een ander counselor of in een ander wijk. I is bezig om ose gemeenschappen kom maak. I is bezig om Zuid-Afrika die mekaar te kom maak. Wat, wat het geworden ons, ie moet is voor ose mensen op die grondvlak. Oos moet, oos moet hier is om die gemeenschappen in toe en, en laat die, had die land Zuid-Afrika, een land Zuid-Afrika wies. Maar ons sit met die challenge, dan kom IEC in en kom registreren ose mensen op een ander hot, maar zo dat weer say is, een straat verdeel voor ons in een ander wijke. Ek as Godfrey George, die wijk raadslet, werkzaam in David Krepper, ondersteen nie die bill van, van hier die afbakeningstraat nie. Ose mensen gaan reeds gebikend. Ose mensen gaan reeds gebikend in die land. Maar nou, die afbakeningverdeel weer een gemeenschap aan drie tot vier stukke. Hoe zal, hoe zal i voel als i een lichaam moet geverteelraad? Die kop hier i kan toe, die lichaam hier i kan toe en, en mijn lichaam hier i kan toe. Gaan i een lever, kan voortmee leven? Zo ons, ik voel persoonlijk dat die bill ondersteen ek nie. Van ose mensen blij in een wijk, hou ose mensen in en hou ose mensen dat os voor mekaar moet om, omgehe. Dus my pleitwijk van aan, van morre aan, aan die afbakeningstraat. En ek hoor i say die negentigste auguste weer, eh, eh, lijst weer is, as i helle hi vanavond dag vertrek, word ons hi weer geleest.
Time up. Number.
Good morning, members of parliament, honorable members of parliament. My name is Godfrey George and I am here on behalf of Ward Five. Today, I actually want to talk about the reason why you are here and that is the demarcation of municipal wards. I want to tell you that this demarcation, this council will divide us and it will impair and deter our jobs as ward members and ward counselors on grassroots level. From the bottom to the top, it will make it life difficult for us. In David Krepper area, even two streets away, it will be a different ward. So we are as a community are being divided. So if I build a house, now I'm a council member for this ward, two streets away, it's a different ward. This, this whole thing takes us back to the apartheid era where this whole country was divided. We need to feel together, we people in this country, we suffering. Oos gaan gebikend, we suffering. Please don't divide us. We need to stand together. This bill will make it very difficult for us to do our work properly. As I said, different wards, fourteen, twelve, five, even one street will divide us even further and will make us difficult. My child, he lives like two streets away, he will be in a different ward. I just want to say that then the IEC comes and they must regger us to, to vote and then we are all in different wards. So we cannot stand together, we can't work together, it will be so difficult for us to do our job. And for that reason, I'm standing in front of you and I'm saying, we do not support this bill. We already suffering, I just want to ask you, finally, how would you feel if I take your body and there goes your head and there goes your arm and there goes your leg? You here, you there, you everywhere. No, it can't work like that. We have to stand together. I'm pleading with you, don't do this to this community. We can't support this bill. Thank you.
Eh, non zakenega, because he, that was a question, this thing of your arm is that side, your head is that side, eh, yeah. Because it might mislead the house. So we, we, we need to clarify some of those. Eh, why this bill? The bill is responding to the problems as he is raising them. In other words, it's trying to respond to experiences of people about delimitation of wards. Get divided by a street, get divided by this or that. That's what the bill is about. It's trying to respond to that and it's saying, let communities be consulted now as groups. So when anybody is going to do delimitation of ward, he must consult communities as groups to avoid what he is talking about. So in other words, we might be saying something completely different from what is in the bill. The bill is trying to address your frustrations about demarcation. I thought I should clarify that, but otherwise we are not supposed to respond to the questions as you speak.
Ik wil iets go go duidelijk stel. Ons als parlementaire kon beteden dat die zo sit, is nie voor hun stel om nou op hier die stadium, op i fra te reageer nie. Daar zal een tijd kom waar ons gaan sitten net besprek. Maar ik voel toch, ik wil net op hier die vorige spreker, se arm hier nie, ben daan nie, kop da, reageer der te say dat dus jij zo kom ons hier die ding nie, net deerdruk nie. Oos kom jijst na i toe. En as kom seef i, kom raak ons slaan van julle frustratie, kom vertel voor ons wat julle nie wil hee nie. Met specifiek hier die wetzontwerp. Zo, oos gaan nie jou kop al goon, jou arm hier, jou ben daan nie, oos sal i. Als julle voor ons seef wat het is, dan zal ons naar julle lijsten, dit is julle vergadering. Zo, ek wil nie jou eindelijk gepraat het nie, maar ik voel het, ik moet ook voor julle say dat hier is die geleentijd dat julle voor ons moet seef hoe julle voel, zo, oos gaan nie net voort gaan in julle opkap nie, een verdeel nie. Oos wil wier wat julle frustraties is. Zo dankie, dit is al wat ik wil say.
Goedemorgen, ek is Piet Morris, geboren in Kanoniland. Karak groot daar. Eh, onze voor oors het een begrafplaas aan Kanoniland gehet van dertig, veertig, vijftig, zestig, zeventig. Toen daar begrafplaas doodgemaakt, mel boer het wangerd op omgeplant en voor ons ander grond gegeven, die mensen van zeventig af. Ander begrafplaas heet. Eh, halle, onze voor oors met die kanon weg afvaat daar. Toevat halle nou hier die begrafplaas op, zeker met die kanon weg tot zo fair as al wat ik wil say. Piet Morris.
Kanoniland, in die tete julle graf, begrafplaas weg af van, dan wangerd op geplant. My name is Piet Morris and I'm from Kanonkop. I'm just standing in front of you today to say that they took our graveyard away. Twenty, thirty years ago, where our people are being buried, the boer, they came, they took that graveyard away and they planted vines there, wangerd. So one of these days, maybe they'll take the kanon away from the Kanonkop, I don't know. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Eh, number five.
Goedemorgen, mijn naam is Jacob Pretorius. Eh, ek blijb Kanoniland op vijftig hectare. My pleit is van morre eh, en jalle as die parlement als het blijf om te kom kijk achter ons. Want ose mensen were doodgemaakt, ik kon het nou al eh, eh, een van mij eh, kerksisters, se, se man is doodgemaakt, ben daar is ie eh, eh, lichie. En nou die dag onlangs is daar een meisje kom wat werk ook voor die gaveman, say ze soldaat, te word say breed gever kracht, der vijf maniekies. Zo, ek een pleit van morre, als het blijf toch, wanneer die par, parlement, als het blijf kijkt julle naar ons. Die mensen ons zien net, die mensen daar so van die, die ANC hier inkom, stemtij. Stemtij dat zien is, hier kom i tloomkarre, beteef van halle wet dieiers, waar is Kanoniland vijftig hectare? Halle kom rij maar artes en ons, is het nou Kanoniland hieri? Zo als het blijf, dat voel voor ons. Eh, 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 die mensen, daar plek vijftig hectare, is het domplek waar al levende mensen gekom, kom begraven is. Zo als het blijf julle, kom julle uit en kom kijk naar die mensen toe daar achter ons, als het blijf dankie is, al wat ik wil gezegd.
Good morning, my name is Jaakop Pretorius and I'm also from Kanoniland and I live on fifty hectares called Kanoniland. Today, I'm standing in front of you, eh, honorable members and I'm pleading with you to come and see where we live in Kanoniland. Well, the other day, one of our community members got murdered because we do not have electricity, it's dark where we live. One church sister, she was murdered. Then it was Then there was a lady, she's a soldier from your government, she works for your government, she's a soldier. She was raped by five guys because it's dark. When voting time comes, the ANC drives right through Canoniland, they don't even know it's Canoniland. I'm pleading with you today, I'm just standing in front of you, I'm asking you nicely, please, come and look for yourselves. Look at us, come and, come and see for yourselves. I'm really asking to come and see and familiarize yourself with our circumstances. That's all I wanted to ask you. Thank you.
Number six.
Aardelijke goeiemorgen, die parlementsleden, als ook die gemeenschap. Ik is Maria Duplessis, ik is van week vijftien, Rosedale. Ik was heel dik onder de indruk dat onze demarcationbord van die ZFM en van DKM, die gemors veroorzaakt, wat in Appington an gaan. En nu moet ik vandaag uitvinden, maar het komt eindelijk die rek van die parlement af. Die grens bepalings enzoo aan. Ik ga vandaag praat namens ons brein mensen. Ik ble in Rosedale. Als i mijn woord kijk, papen en strikte tot waar. Als ik regel, zie ik i gooien al ons brein mensen aan hun vjalt toe. Ons bleen nog al daar achter die vjalt, dan is i wat die grens bepaal. Zo ik wunder net, wat kan jillen rechter van ons? Als jillen voor ons dat is niet dieren gaan gooien aan elkaar. Als ik nou kijk, ik werk in die gemeenschap, samen met de, ons werk samen met de IEC. En ons krijg problemen elk jaar per kiesing tijd. Want die apakking is slecht mensen. Ons, die vorige spreker, het is hoor, twee, drie sprekers voor mij het gepraat van grens. Ik zit nou in een week en week vijftien. En dan is week dertien net rech voor mij. Die straat achter mij heeft vijftien isen, wat nou aan week dertien wordt. Alle versaden heeft iere dat nog eens kip, week dertien toe, oorkant zie plefeisel pad. Week dertien is het deel van Rosedale, maar week dertien is ingeleefd bij Papalelo. Kijk waar is Papalelo, ze week dertien, dan kijk je waar is Rosedale, ze week dertien. Hoe gaan daar dienstige lever worden? Hoe gaat daar noodgefallen is? Hoe goed gaan die raadsle taan kan wees? Als die raadsle moet uitkom. Dat is het probleem waarmee ons zit. Ons kan niet meer, onze, onze kinders, ons daar is, ons weten meer bent om met onze kinders te gaan niet. Want onze kinders wordt verkraagd, die tek kop is zitten achter die vjalt. Onze kind, onze kinders heeft eens meer een speelplek niet, want die grens is toe. Ik wil toch wie i vraagt, als er blijft, begin kijken naar ons brein mensen in Appington, begin kijken naar die grens in Appington. Zodat ons is zoals een klomp uitlanders voel niet, zodat ons ik kan voel, ons is maar het een klomp dieren, wat daar i was gaan gooien gaan worden niet. Want dit is hoe ons voel. Rechtig mensen, dat is hoe ons als brein mensen voel. En ons vraag i as parlement, als i nou weer gaan kijken naar die apakking van Appington, van week vijftien, van Rosedale, hou op om voor ons aan hun vjalt te gooien, daar is de dierse daar achter in Rosedale. Kijk je wie, kijk je wie ver genoeg, tussen kijk je wie ver genoeg. En die achterdierse is een hoop vjalt, wat nu moet een sportstadion gemaakt wordt. Hoe maak je een sportstadion tussen toestussen geacht, waar mensen blij en die mensen moeten nog achter die vjalt gaan blij? Kijk als er blijft naar i apakking, en daar, die andere dingen wat ik wil vragen. Als i apakking, is daar van onze mensen samen met jillen, wat weet wat gaan aan hun Appington of wat gaan aan die ZFM streep. Zit daar mensen samen met jillen, waar er jillen besluiten neem over die apakking, want dat ons mensen wat weet wat gaan aan. Baaij dank jullie.
Dank u.
Good morning. Good morning, members of parliament, honorable members and community members. Thank you for being here today. My name is Maria Duplessis and I am standing here in front of you on behalf of my people, the colored people. I'm from Rosedale, Ward fifteen. And I always thought that all this nonsense going on here in Appington with the demarcation and the re thingies shuffling of all these words was the workings of the ZFM and the DFM, to only find out today that it's you people from parliament that's causing all this nonsense. Ach no, man. I must find out today, then I want to say to you on behalf of us, colored people. Ach, please, man. We live there among the animals. What do you think of us? You never look after us. Even behind me, a street behind me. You know Papa, this area, Ward thirteen?
Papa Lela fly.
That, that one. You know that one, how are you gonna do service delivery? If now this one is there and, and, and this one is there and two houses behind me has got five houses, but it's a different ward? How's the emergency services going to react? If this is chopped up like this and demarcated like this? I feel about three or four speakers here in front of me, the person mentioned this raping of people and killing of people. Our children have no place to play. There's no play area for them. Please, you must come and look for yourselves, we live like outcasts. We live like animals. If you want to do this demarcation thing, come to Appington first. Come here, see for yourselves. Yeah, we live there, you know, somewhere there is an open field. And they want to put a sports stadium there. How are you gonna put a sports stadium between all these houses? So when you do this demarcation, I'm asking you nicely, come to us first, come to the community people, consult us. We will help you, we can inform you, we can assist you. That's I'm asking here, I'm, I just want to say this on behalf of my people, the colored people. Thank you.
We still want more people to speak. And so I can say now, I'll give you numbers. You are number one. Number two, Baba. Number three. Number four. Why are you pulling yourself down now, number four? Number five. I'm coming this way. Number six. Number seven. Number eight. Number nine. Number ten. Go to the, go to the queue. Oh, you'll come later. Any further hands or are the chairs finished? They are finished, okay. Come, number, number one. Can we? Can we be quiet, please? And allow number one, come forward.
Goedemorgen, baaij danki. My name is Mathieu Ross. And ik is een trotse lid van die DA. Een jongman wat opstaan voor die mensen. En als voor mij baaij snacks, dat ons moet vandaag onze verschillen met die mensen van parlement komen uitdaal. Die een van die mensen bleen in Appington niet. Ons het eindelijk die demarcationbord van DKM en ZFM, dat is die mensen wat die demarcation voor helle die stier. Zo nu moet ons onze frustraties komen uitdaal, hoe kom, kom die mensen niet, van alle weten wat gaan jullie hier komt te krijgen. Nu moet ons hem met die mensen komen strijven, en is baaij snacks, die mensen wat die demarcation doen is mensen van Appington. Waar is helle? Want baaij goeie simpele kijk, het wel i wat tussen week een en week vijftien is wordt. Week dertien toch is die, nou wil ons weten, wat is die grens? Die grens lijnen is misschien een treinspoor, een pat, een brug. Nou daar is een brug wat daar loopt. Dat skijm ons die grens lijne, hoe kan helle? Gemeenschappen wat de grens lijn oorskrin naar ander wijt toe. Zoals wil we die, die, die parlementse, helle moet die mensen stier wat die demarcation voor jille stier. Want jille krijgen misschien demarcation van helle. Om goed te, zo ik, Mathieu Ross, staan niet die bal voorin, ik staan teen die bal, ik kierde die goed, die dank i.
It's interpretation, yes.
Baaij dan. Good morning and thank you. My name is Mathieu Ross and I'm a proud member of the DA. I stand up for my people's rights. It is very funny that today we have to come here and we have to tackle these people, the members of parliament. We don't want to tackle the members of parliament, we want the people who send them, the people of KDM and ZA, and ZA. They send you here, we want them to come here so that we can engage them. We want to engage them because when you demarcate, there's obviously going to be a railroad, a railway, a road and a bridge is going to be there. We want them to come here and account so that we can ask them questions, they must not send you. They must come so that we can ask them the questions. Thank you.
Before, before. I'm told, I don't know how this is going to work, but there's still space here. There are people who are said to be outside, who want to come in. They are making a suggestion that after speaking, I don't think that would work. After speaking, you must open space for them. But let's manage that, let's, let's continue with the presentation.
Voor zit er eten verzoek, blijkbaar is daar nog mensen wat bij te staan, wat graag plek wil een. Die verzoek is dat zodra iemand klaas spreekbeurt gaat het, dat zo personeet kan ons verschoen. Lat ons meer spaas je kan skip, dat die mensen wat bij te staan kan inkom en helle ook beurt. Verstaan ons allemaal?
Good, good morning. My name is Norman Prince, I'm from the Gattelopeli local municipality. Ward one, which is in Daniel's scale. We were almost a bit confused about the purpose of this meeting. We thought it was for us to comment and to input on the basis of the bill that has been presented before us. However, we as a community received this bill, not in its comprehensive form, just the summary at the eleventh hour last night, I should say. And we never had the privilege to go through the bill and to comment comprehensively to it and also to have the opportunity to come and present the essence of what the community would like us to comment on. But the meeting in its holistic sense had the diversity of organizations, labor, civil society, political organizations, youth formations, etcetera. Now, we came to a, an understanding mutually, all of us. And I was amongst the people that were requested to come and make this humble plea. Since we couldn't comment and also the person who was presenting was not very conversant with the, the bill in its, in its, in its form. We understand and it, it was understood that what the intention of the bill is. It is ready to deal with blockages, etcetera, etcetera. But we did not have the, the, the time and opportunity to do likewise so that we can give some useful input. Conclus, in our conclusion and the proposal that was then made was for us who would be present today to come and do this plea. If we could be afforded an opportunity to do a written presentation at any given time prior to the expiry of this particular process. And that we can then formulate a comprehensive submission that will incorporate the sentiments of all the community-based organizations and all the formations in our area. So if that is permissible, we would humbly request that. And that is because what we've sensed yesterday was that a lot of people were not properly briefed in terms of what the purpose and intention of this bill is. And we wouldn't have done justice if we would have come here and come and input. I would have given my individual sentiments and it is not what the aspiration of all of us are. So thank you if I would then be allowed a response in that respect. Thank you very much.
It doesn't require any interpretation. You are granted that permission. In fact, when I introduced our purpose of being here, we said those who might not have had time, enough time to go through the bill, as long as they can meet, deal with this and make a submission before the twenty ninth of August. So we agree. So any other person who might have that feeling, that permission is granted. That you can make a written submission on the basis of whatever group that you sit with. So you are free coming. Number.
Goedemorgen, ik is mener PP Jeter Klerk, een Appington, inwoner van Appington, en week twee. Ik staan hier van morgen om mijn gevoel uit te oefenen. En voor ik, wil ik van morgen, wil ik vraa dat hier wat van morgen gesaid wordt, hoe die presidentstafel op neer zit, hoeveel die gemeenschap van Appington. Ik sta van morgen hier negentig jaar, die ANC regering. Het voor mij, tot van morgen, nog niks gedaan niet. Niks. Toen man daar op die stoel gekomen toen moet ze gesaid ook hij, die oude mensen krijgen zeewoond eraan. We zijn omgedraaid en zitten daar aangewond eraan bij. Wij willen bij bekje op die stoel komen, ze gesaid ook hij, maar daar dat aangewond, daar kom ik serie, nee gewond eraan bij. Zomaar een paar presidenten komen iets bijgezet, dat geld bijgezet. San is van morgen nog, waar die wat mensen voor ons geloost het. Waar voor ons geloost het. En die eerste plek, die bijeising, ze voor een zeg, gaan jillen beter, beter leven hebben. Ons is nog slechter af als van die oude apartheid, slechter, slechter. Ons is teruggevaard. Ons is, hok ik is hort gekomgeven, kom bouwen isen, die steen op oors bevat er ligt terug. Wat er hij steen afgevaard, ligt voor alle gevaard. Sessennegentig, in die sessennegentig heb ik, heb ik een brief geschreven, ik wens hij, hij persoonlijk is van morgen en hier die gevoer. Toen schrijf ik in mijn brief, in hier een rapport, mensen, als jillen kies, kies jillen recht. Kies jillen recht. Toen ze hij persoonlijk schreef mijn brief terug in de Korando, zei hij, ik wens, ik weet, ik weet, ik wens, ik kende dit, waar blij ik kom, mag ik gedood. En van morgen zeg, die ANC, het was nog slechter, de apartheid daar die boeren hebben nog voor is brood gehebt, daar is werk geweest. Daar is je meer werken. De opstel is jongkinder, zit bestred, zit een tek rook. Die mag is bij die politie afgevaard. Die bijbel is in de, in de school uitweggevaard, in de is uit, die laat is weggevaard. Daar moeten die parlement beginnen, beginnen met Gods diensten niet. Die ANC, die.
Sorry, sorry, those people who those people at the back. This is a meeting of parliament. We only allow one person to speak. You will all be allowed to speak. Please, let's not drown the speaker, let's allow him to speak and then we'll allow. and then we'll allow anybody, but will not allow people at the back to disrupt this meeting. Otherwise, eh, once we notice that you are disruptive, would please ask you to leave the meeting. Please, let's allow, we want to hear him. Okay?
Mneer, ik ken jakan see mneer. Ek het my rech mneer. Want do is die ANC regering met ons op pad? Want do? Ked es kom, siet is nou, aan donker te siet ons. Alles gaan te nie woest. Ons arm is hort moe nog meer verarmer. Was hem nog daai die van ou, of van apartheid, was hem nog in die middel geweest. Waar is ons nou heel achter? Achter toe gestood. Ek seef vanmorgen, ons breid mensen wordt die meer kop toegevat. Mensen jalle hier geomkry het. Diep los hier geomkry. Was het hort nog geverdrik en geverdrik. Wil ek vanmorgen se, daar is iemand wat voor julle raak zien. Met ons breid mensen omwege. Is vanmorgen se dat hieri, hieri, hieri mensen terug gaan. En verserel op se kiedlik ons mensen. Kiedlik ons arm breid mensen. Ked to likel. Wil vanmorgen wil ik een beroep doen. Bring bijwel terug school toe. Bring laat terug in die eis in. En je bij die polisie sey mag van geweld, moord, verkracht vat oor in ons gemeenskap. As a belief. Bonie, julle uitstap, dan goei julle daar, daar papieren weg nie. That's what, that's what. ANC, ek, ek noem dat weere ANC is corrupt. Tamle ik ons lan soor. Tamle ik ons lan soor. Was het aan die donker te? Dank you.
Thank you. Eh, please, please. Eh, si akkeela, abanya bandabanga tete yo. Was our only chance, we'll call them here. Please, let's be quiet. Allow those who are speaking so that we can hear them. We don't want excitement here. We want people to speak. Okay?
Still, as a belief. Die mensen wat nog neerle kasse kryt om de prati, he would se. And iemand kan skier om se set as see, as a belief.
My name is Peter Klerk and I am from Appington. Good morning to the parliament. I'm from Ward Two. I'm standing in front of you today to try and express my feelings about what are being said here today and what's happening here today. Twenty-nine years ago, the ANC came into power. But what did the ANC do for me? Nothing, nothing. When Mandela took the chair, pensioners were promised eight hundred rand. Then the next president comes and he adds little bit, and he adds little bit. But where I stand here in front of you today, at least I can say this. Where the white people left us, we are worse off. We are worse off than in the apartheid years. When people build houses, the bricks are lying there. Tomorrow they come there. The bricks are gone, they took the bricks for them. In nineteen ninety-six, I wrote a letter and I said, if you vote, you vote right. The Buddha, they gave us work. Today, there's no work. Absolutely no work. Our children, they smoke tek. That's all they do, they smoke tek. The police have got no power. There's rape. There are cruel, uh, uh, crime everywhere. There's no religion in schools. Bring back that latman that we can discipline our children. Bring it back into the school. Sir, can I say, sir? Please. Where is the ANC going with us? There's no electricity where we live. The poor gets poorer. At least in apartheid, we were somewhere in the middle. Now, we are pushed right back, right back. I'm standing here and I'm just saying that this government is not taking the colored people seriously. You're not taking us to the corp. You're not taking us seriously. What is a corp to me? We are suppressed. If someone looked at us, please, give the police back our, their power. Please, do we, if you leave here today, don't take all these papers and just throw it in the bin. Don't forget about us. The ANC is corrupt. But please, I'm asking you, look after us. Thank you.
You see, because I don't hear when people speak Africans. Eh, but when it's interpreted, this is just an appeal. This is a meeting where we are bringing a bill of parliament to make laws. This, this is not a platform for people to campaign for political parties. Eh, just explain that so that people understand. We are a multi-party committee here. We have got all the parties.
Ek wil dit by, diedlik stel. A vanreek nou laister naadi, tokum nou nou Afrikaans to vadimis, en osir nou tokelen nou me na Engels toe. Wil ik net by, mooi vir jy fra. Hieri, ons wat hier sit, ons is een saamgestelde parlementaire portefiliacomitee. Hieri is een publieke verwoer mensen oor een sekere wetzontwerp. Hieri is nie een klasse, is hiene? Ons kan nie, ik ons het een complain, complain, complain nie. Ons moet hieri wetzontwerp bespreken. Dus een publieke verwoer vir hieri specifieke wetzontwerp. Okay. Danki.
Eh, we will allow everybody to speak. So I, I, I plead with anybody, will allow everybody. In, in other words, will not interfere, even if you campaign here. Will not say stop. But it is just a message to help people understand where are we, what are we doing. But will not stop anybody when he speaks there. Over to you.
Net, net jy laster din? Ek wil dit diedlik stel. Dat jy kan maak om kla ook? Ons is hienvier stop nie. Amok kan praat. Ons is vir jou toelaut om te praat. Maar ek wil net vir julle mooi verdeidik het wat ons eindelijk hier doen. Zo ons is eindelijk ma net hi om julle te help, om die, julle sete kan see oor hieri wetzontwerp. Maar as jy moet kla, moet jy klaas gaan, hienvier stop nie, kan praat.
Thank you, Jefferson. My name is Budelanina Pakade from David Kriper area. Chair, we firstly want to say to our parliament, thank you for coming to our local area. Normally, this sessions only goes to Kimberley. So we are very humble that it also goes to areas such as this one. We don't support this bill in totality. Is this community in totality. Simply because this bill will take the powers of the people away from our communities. We got our own traditional people, more especially in your Mir or Ridfontein area. We cannot and we are not going to allow that a board that will be sitting in Johannesburg take decisions behalf of our people. We are not going to allow that. We also, we are grateful that submissions will be sent, if I'm correct, until the twenty-nine of August so that we can submit additional inputs to this bill. But behalf of my community and I'm not speaking behalf of a color. No, we, I'm speaking behalf of our community in general. We are not supporting this bill. Thank you very much.
Five.
Speak, sir. Ma disa, kwenke a. Jy kwaal, Stanley Peterson. Eh, ek is Stanley Peterson. Ek is speaker van die district municipality, die is op die ZFN. Ek support nie die billne, een. Jy weet, als het begin in die land, toe dat draaddeinings beginne kom. Toe mensen draaddeinings beginne span, toe bakende le als af. Daarom vandaag, zien iemoes onder centis en die mensen dat bij te kan, het plasen wanneer het begin met die draaddeinings. Wanneer wil ons beginne dink om jy voor ons terugtevat nou ou apartheid vette toe? Die vette is ou apartheid vette wat ons mensen terughvat na wat toe. Jefferson, jy terhege se, ons is hier om te campaignie. Maar ons moet weet ons is regieringsamternare. En my plead we hi en ons mensen, kom ons praat oor die wetgeving. Kom ons praatie hi oor wie ons isie. Ons is verschillende politieke partijen. Ek het mye politieke partij. Maar het ga nie hi oor ditie. Het ga nie oor ons mensen. Ons mensen wordt verdeel. Ons mensen wordt misbreid. Ons mensen wordt die kop toegevatie. En een van die goed waar ons mensen die kop toegevat isie, is die vet. Ons blij in David Kriper Municipality. David Kriper Municipality is de grootste municipality in Zuid-Afrika. Ey, die verste dorp is tweehonderd drieendzvig kilometer. Maar die, maar wat ons nie in gedacht hou nie, ons het van mir en die kilarie bij David Kriper gesit. Maar ons het vergeet om geld ook bij te sit. Nou kan ons mensen nie dienste kry nie. Wanneer ons moe nou so ver gaan met de water truck, tweehonderd drieendzvig kilometer gaan rij om water te gaan ge. En dit is ons probleem. Dat baat die ons praat wegie. Ons moet nie weer voor ons terugvat. We say we live in democracy. Don't take us back to apartheid. Van ons vat ons nou terug naar apartheid toe. Ons moet ons ook een naam noemen wat ons isie. Jy zien die naam van kleerlinge wat ons vanmorgen hi praat? We talk about kalis. Die mensen het ons kleerlinge genoem om ons te verdelen. En so kom ons so hi praat van mekaar? Van ons is die kleerlinge nie. Kleerlinge was gemaak met de vet, vette me dertig van neentien vijftig. In neentien een en neentig, toe vat evi de klerk daar wet terug. Wat is ons vandaag? Noem voor me het kleerling wat de land het. Noem voor me het kleerling wat de taal het. Hij hetie. Daarom moet ons weet wat ons praat. Ons moet weet wie ons is. Ons was eerste hi so, as die koi en die san mensen. Vandaag, as jy hier rondom Appington kijk, die dorp waarin die vandaag is, is die hoofdstad van Plakkerskamp. Ken wil jy hier kryt net Plakkerskamp? Kom ons beveeg weg, want dit is die afbakend. Als jy kijk, die afbakend ons gebiede, dit is net Plakkerskampen. Centis. Wanneer wil ons beveeg na die net die toe voor ons mensen? Daarom voel ek dat die vet discriminet geen ons mensen. Hieri vet, sey nog steeds voor ons, die dorp is die dorp. Daarom is al die mole in die dorp en nie nie lokasi nie. Ons wordt genoemie lokasi en die dorp wordt genoemie dorp. Bye, danki.
Eh, number six. Oh, you interpret first.
Good morning. My name is, uh, Stanley Peterson. I'm the speaker of the district municipality. Firstly, I must say I do not support this bill because this bill, um, it comes with its things. Trouble started when wiring fencing started because the wire fences, they brought in separation. And that is how we were separated. And this bill, so let us talk things that must be talked about and we must talk the bill here. We must not talk politics here. We have come, um, we are not here to represent our political parties. We are talking the bill because this bill is going to separate us further. Uh, David Kriper Municipality is the biggest, um, municipality in, in South Africa. But you will find yourself a truck with water traveling two hundred and seventy-three kilometers. How is it possible, two hundred and seventy-three kilometers to be traveled with a truck filled with water? Um, the other thing is that I want to appeal to you. Do not take us back because this bill takes us back to the apartheid era. We, um, in nineteen fifty, uh, this separation started in nineteen fifty. In nineteen ninety-one, the clerk gave this thing back. So, um, we are the first people that have been here. The koi and the san. So, we're asking, where are we going to be moving with our people? Please, don't take us back to apartheid. Thank you.
Eh, Landela, ma. Come in.
Goei morgen, parlementense mensen. Ek is vandaag, ek is Johanna Foster van Bloosse Kop. Geboren en groot geword. Ek is blij en dankbaar dat ik vandaag kan direct met parlementense mensen kan praat. Soos ik nou hier in die regen sit, dat ik gevoer, ons moet mener kla. Maar ons het de reden om te kla. Van ons zit in die verdrikking. Ons zit in die omstandighede. Ek dink stelig iemand wat nog hier in de verdrikking en omstandighede gesetet kan so praat. Ons het mener kla. Ek zit bij lang in Bloosse Kop. Bij die vijftig hectare. Ons het al bij lang voor die ANC gestem, maar daar gebeur net niksie. Ons zit nog vandaag net waar we ons zit. Ons kan blij wees, ons het daarom onze eiye jar te en ons het onze songeisy kies. Maar verder het niks gebeurie. So oud soos ik hier is, moet ik achter die bosse gaan stand en dan moet ik gaan uitloop. Ek moet in die kanal water gaan skip waar jy doon honen afdrijf en die mensen dood gaan. Vandaai water moet ons drink en ons moet leven. Bij van mye vrienden, het al doodgegaan van machtte, van dan moet hij veel water moet le drink. En daar is ook man werk. Ons het voor ons uitgewerk voor die boeren. Daarom zit ons vandaag daar. Missipone te werk kom uit. Maar nogi een keer, het ek betrokke geraak in daar werkie. Daarom zit ik vandaag daar. Daar is geen toiletie. Daar is geen toilet wat ons kan gebrekie. Nie is elektrische tijdie. Ons moet gaan leren van krimmelkies optel om daar ou broodje kan gaar te maak en te eat. So ek noe julle vriendlik uit parlementense mensen om mener vette te lippen maak. Vroesla godse wijsheid om voor julle te lei. Ek noe julle uit om vroeslik na ons te kom en seel te kom zien hoe ons leven. Daar zal julle weet om mener vette te stel. Want dit is godse aardedie. Soos het voor mij neet, julle die mag in die mandat de parlementense mensen om net kan vette te kom en te kom stel. Toen die man toe zit ook een vet, a bella vet. Nou zit alweer een vetzontwerp inge so.
Good morning, members of parliament, all my members. My name is Johanna Foster and I was born and raised in Bloosse Kop. I'm very thankful and I'm very happy to be standing in front of you today to speak directly to you as members of this parliament. I heard now we mustn't complain so much, but we have so much to complain about. We are being suppressed. Every year we vote for the ANC, but we sit where we sit. We going nowhere. I've got my own little yard, yes I do, and I've got my own little songe, oikie, my little songeisy hot. I've got that, thank you for that. But if I want to go anywhere, I've got to go outside and sit there in the felt. If I want water, I have to go to that canal there close by and I have to get the water from there where there's a dead dog going by there in the water. People are dying from their stomachs. They get sick, they get ill from that dirty water. They die. Yet I'm standing in front of you today and I'm worked old, I'm old as I worked for the, for the Buddha. We worked ourselves to pieces for them. And today, there's no work. If I want to make something to eat, I have to pick up wood. No electricity. And then I have to cook it. I want to ask you something today. Why didn't you make laws? Make less laws and ask for God's wisdom. Come and see how we live. This is God's earth. It's not ours, it's not yours, it's God's. You just come with all this vet he have. You just come with all these wet here, a raga raai, these laws, laws, lawmaking, lawmaking. In June it was this bella law and now it's this law and that law. Maybe we should stop the laws now a bit and just ask for God for some wisdom. Thank you.
Eh, number six.
Number seven. Ek is Mambo Buyswa Sienggo. Dankie parlement dat ie vandaag hier is, Mister parlement. Ek kom hoor nou bij die laatste stoelen van hoe julle nou verdeidelijk. Maar ek het gekom sit om te complain. Kus jammer. Ek is een entrepreneur. Bij een groot entrepreneur. Lat ik al, entrepreneur ook devilop. Maar soos ik hier staan, is ik brandarm van gestele mij. Ik word gebestel. Die nieuwe government het mooi ingekom van ons ons slagemaak van apartheid. Maar hulle het ook voor ons kom bestel. Dit is jammerte. Ik had al gereze haar op mij kop. Ik kan enige tijd, ek is fifty-seven hier. Ek losse efpos van kampierplek voor mij kinders, maar daar is nog niks wat ik besit nie, ek is bestel. Mensen wat geleerd is bestel ons wat bij die parlement kom. Die parlement help die mensen. Goed is wordgediliver dat ein dag bij hulle. Ek staan nou voor vrouwen wat bezigheid daad, is die vrowens is, wat al bestel is, ek staan voor hulle. Ek het een kampierplek, ek geef voor die oma's bifthys. Is afgegeven voor mij gemeenschap. Ek het traditional dances groepen, alles word bestel, ek besit niks hier. Ek het beginnen met een coffeeshop. Wat ek, die plek is bij een mooi. Wat de skate was, wat ons gerijd met die rivier met die skate. To het onze vader Mandela voor onze een brug gebouw. En die skate is demonstrate nou van waar van dan ons kom. En ek het coffeeshops gemak, broer roosterbrood en koffie voor die tourists me gemaakt. En tourists me het me gehelp om een rechte coffeeshop te krijn. Maar mensen wat voor mij is, het voor hulle mensen die coffeeshop gegeen. Was een container met alles besitine. Parlement, ek wens ek kon in die parlement sit om mensen te help wat gebestel word. Weet julle hoe voel de mens verneder als jy iets beginne om die gemeenschap te help? En jy word in gebreek van mensen wat zelf is geleerd, want jy is sie geleerd nie. Parlement, ek staan, wil nie verder praat nie. Ek staan nog altijd, ek was al hier op een keer. Ons word bestel. Die mensen rijkarre, die mensen doen hulle so bezigheid bij ander plekke, de reacte hulle is nog beamtes wat nog voor julle kan help, voor ons kan help. Dan kom ek uit bij ons nie. Ek het een bij een mooi grond wat een resort is. Hulle wil tot die resort stel, want hulle is nie gedachte van resort. En dit is die parlement, mensen. Hulle kom bij om voor mij te bestel. Maar hier goed wat ek dien, wat ons dien, is een levendage God. Tell me. Ek sal nee daar los, dankie.
Good morning to the members of parliament. I am Mambo Buyswa Siengga. Sienggo, is it Sienggo? Sienggo, bye dan ki. I came here and I heard we are not supposed to complain. But I came here and I was sitting here and I heard everything. But I came and I must complain. I'm a very big entrepreneur and I'm this big entrepreneur, entrepreneur that I even develop the others, the younger ones. These entrepreneurs, I developed them. I'm disgusted that people are stealing from us. They are stealing your property, they are stealing your intellectual property. If you come with a new idea, even that one is being stolen. I have developed so many entrepreneurs, but today I'm fifty-seven year old and I'm broke. As people have been stealing my things. I have given a camping site, but even that camping site was stolen. And you see people driving around in communities and they do not even live here. And every idea that you come up with to develop entrepreneur, even that idea is being stolen. So, I have developed this coffeeshop, I've started this coffeeshop for the elderly. And I got great help from tourists and it went well. But even that one has been taken by influential people and handed to their families. I'm disgusted. I want people to know that which belongs to us is being stolen. I have a nice property. But now, I want to say this. People must know this God that we serve, I serve a loving God, stop stealing from us.
Eh, number eight.
Greetings, parliament. I'm Nandaitini Skae. I'm Nandaitini Skae, Wardlevan, David Kreper. We broadly in support of an independent authority task with function. Our contribution here is to ensure that there are no loopholes in the bill that would engage the independence of the independent demokation board. Thank you.
Next. Number nine. Interpreter, do you want, oh, it's fine.
Good morning to all. My name is Lindokuleskae, Lucrecia Skae, from David Kreper, Wardlevan. RTT member in the EFF. Chaperson, the demokation of wards and municipal councils is crucial for sustainance of democracy in the country. Section one fifty-five-three of the constitution requires that an institution dealing with demokation issues must be completely independent so as not to allow narrow political interests to influence decisions on demokation. Thank you.
Goedemorgen, leder van die parlement. Ek is Katrina Dodds en ek is oorspronglijk van die Mir area in die David Kreper Municipaleite. Eerste wil ik say, ek het nou gesit in Lister in een beekje kreveler geword. Als ons say, die regering van die dag het voor ons niks gedoe nie. Dan beteken het ons wetrichtig nie wat er geleend het, het ons vandaag nie. En één van die geleendheden wat ons vandaag het is om te praat oor een bill wat naar ons toe gebrand word, die regering van die dag. Zo dat beteken, dat was bij een voor ons gedoe. Als in de wadi van Zuid-Afrika was daar bij een bij een voor ons gedoe. Ons wil say ons kan nie hier die bill in totaliteit ondersteen nie. En dan het ons reden soek om ons dit say. Wanneer is er kore authorities wat weggevat word van die gemeenschap? Om te say hoe hulle, hulle wijke wil ei. Ek is één van daar die gemeenschap leder, weer die peinletterlijk voel met amalgamatie van het tweeë municipality te wat ene geword het. En dat is soek om ons vandaag pleit. Dat ie liever ons die geleendheid geen om onze inputte lever opschrift. Zo dat ie kan die bill so aanpass dat die mensen op die grond nog steeds die dienst kan krijn. En nie weer hoe word as gevolg van een besluit wat die reë demokation board geneem is om dienstlevering te ontvang nie. Ek is één van die voorstanders en ik moet het vandaag hier say wat gaan beklij. Dat ons die ou Mir Municipaleite moet terugkrijen. Wanneer die afstanden tussen twee plekke, wanneer dit gamalge meer word of wanneer dit as een wijk gesnui word, het een inpak en een bitter inpak op die gemeenschap daarbij te, bye dan ki.
Good morning, members of parliament, community. My name is Katrina Dodds and I am from the Mir area in the David Kreper Municipality. I sat here and I listened to the people saying that this government has done nothing for us. And I felt awkward, I felt creepy. You know why? We forget what this government has done for us. The fact that we can stand here today and voice our opinions about a bill is what this government has done for us and I thank you for that. We mustn't forget that. This government gave us this opportunity to voice our opinions. And with that, I want to just say to you, thank you, but I cannot accept this bill in its entirety. And I will give you my reasons. I want you to adapt this bill so that when you amalgamate two municipalities, that you remember that service must still be able to be delivered to that bigger area. And I'm standing here in front of you today to fight to get the Mir area back and give its own municipality back and not be amalgamated as one big area. Because that has a serious impact on service delivery. And for that, I will fight because that has got a very, very big influence on us, specifically the service delivery. Thank you.
Eh, number eleven.
Can you guess? Think ons karomano dieudad rein. Now, diake Kaiharib, umseraha, rimfasma, kuwetensa. Now, netse zegirani abramati, kunarang, ah, launha. Orakea kuuya, kainse ngungatma. Kwenke warak, kiri para utkau, kunara ma wa. Now, netse zegirani amia, diake nebelsa ma atma, onatma. Nebelske kwense diitma. Now, udaki akoke, launara, ongauda madida ramio. Now nebelske warak, ah, kunara u, kunara mayma. Onke kwenke raumsraha, na kwenke kunao atma, launha kunke kwenitma. Udaki ak, kwenadire, diazinki nebrahamos. So diazinki kuera mikautse, kwenarang, tamara kobapa kachintse nebraha. So kwenke andema, tamara kwenke nebraha, kei karibkara ha kwenke. Now, okade garamia, eh, nebelske hun faramsa, chatsma. Hun faramske keiya, warak, ah, kunna uan kunna, manekabe ra hati, awa kunara u. Laadikinke diitma. It doesn't work correctly because this bill it's only affect the people who are staying in your location. The people who are staying near to the town. If you check the whole areas where the people are having farms and I don't want to say it in brackets, I don't want to call names. I don't want to call names, I'm just say that because nowadays it's not only white people's having farms. You must understand that each and every people around, they're staying in our local areas, in our districts, have lot of farms and they are staying in those type of big areas and they are not be democated at the end of the day. We are taking the land from us and give it to the other people. This demokation having a big effects and it's causing us problems. We are coming from very far whereby the areas that been democated the last time are wiped from each other. The Masparate cannot come there, it was the first one. This one, as we read it, is a little bit difficult. Sisindma kunke nena, kainse idma. Aba uare, abatekre, blaire, are, kwenasi dingire, nyuare, pa kunadire dokasam brief, bye dan ki.
Um, master speaker, master speaker, master speaker. Tsakoma detia. Ah, tsakoma deinde we dik uya deta. Tsakomdamkwa deveve, tsata damme kuya ave.
I see, diake tamara kobapa, tamara kobapa, launha kobapa, se ngua, diake ngungatma. I'm speaking Damara.
Okay.
Yes, Damara.
That's the.
The people back in the days who were staying next to this orange river. If you can see, if you go back, if you listen to the names that are next to this orange river are the Damaran, Nama, Koisan names. Let me make an example. Let me make an example. We have Kaes, we have Kaiharib, we have Keima, we have Namakwe. It's been time that you people must start recognize us. We were the first people who are staying along this side of rivers. These names that we have here is the names that coming from us. We have been pushed away, but we are not blaming anyone. We just say that, guys, come back, recognize us, come and work with us and remember that we are part of this area. We've been here a long time ago, our forefathers were staying here. That's why Keigrub means the groot rivier. Keimus means the groot oog, understand? So you guys can come back and so that we can work together and not just bring a bill that will effect and that will destroy our people at the end of the day. I'm speaking Damaratam and some of the people there here or some of the people are staying along the river speaking Nama. Some of them are speaking San, Koi and Muta. So guys, I'm just asking for you guys to come back, sit with this bill and start to listen to what the people are saying. The effects that they have on the people is very big. So let's make a difference when we start to accept the bill. Thank you very much.
Actually, morning. I am Eritah Emidiaka from Kimberley. I am Que, so I am doing Que dam. So he was speaking Nama like he was saying, he said it all. He, I can't understand what he say, it's actually like Africans and English, it's different. So I'm speaking Que and he is speaking Nama, so we can't understand each other. Thank you.
By implication, it then sends a message to parliament to say, parliament, there are these languages, they must be understood. So I think we're taking the message and, but one little message before I allow the speaker. When we started, I indicated that the bill was taken to the National House of traditional and Koisan leaders. In the other provinces, we were going with them. So I'm sure as we proceed with the bill, in other words, when it comes to demokation, traditional areas must be taken into account. So in other words, we would want their views. So it's not the normal what dim limitation, the way you understood it. There might be development. I thought I should just raise that because of the last speaker to say we are also trying to accommodate everybody. Okay. Okay.
I will not graag noem met verwijzen naar die vorige spreker wat gepaard het van die mensen wat eerste hier was koysan. Ik heb ook genoemd in die begin, het ik verduidelijk, dat ons hier die wetsondwerp gefatting naar die traditionele leiers toe, die koyn in die san. En dus eerste met helle besprek. Zo, zo zie die proces aangaan, gaan ons met al die traditionele leiers hier die hele zaak ter tafel brengen voor bespreken. Zo ik wil dit ook niet noem, dat ondertussen die begin het ik wel gesé dat hier die proces ook definitief naar die traditionele leiers te genoemd zal worden. Dank je.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. May the peace of the Almighty God be with you all. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. I begin in the name of Almighty God. Ik zal mijn Afrikaans praten, want negenentig procent van die mensen hier die zaal is Afrikaans. Ik is Hajmumina Suliman. Ik won in Uppington van apniedien vierendzeventig. Ik was een strong ANC. En ik denk allemaal dat hij belistet raar raar van kennis tot bij Zamanisol. Maar ik heb mij borkies verhang. Zo die ANC moet helle in ikzelf blameer. Ik is niet quaad voor die ANC niet, ik is quaad voor die leierskap. Ik heb mij borkies verhang na himmen mischaba, Action SA. Ik heb hier die bill nou net gekrijgen. En ik zien dat is zestendertig pages. Zo ik kan niet zeggen dat is regen, ik kan ook niet zeggen dat is verkeerd niet. Ik is een wijk elf. Dat is iets wat ik voor je onder je aandacht wil brengen, die leierskap hiervoor. Onze stukje twee jaar dat ons die local government gehad het als ik rechent. Voor die twee jaar heeft die raadslid als gevolg van een demarcation board dat al die jaren verwijd drie was ons ingeleid, toen komt die demarcation board en helle swa om en helle brengt vers klippend en zesbre in. Die raadslid September heeft niet een vervoer niet. Dit kost voor haar om problemen te komen oplossen, Extension, Lemundray en Kamielmont. Maar zij blij in Kolksloot, wat approximately under correction, ik denk het is zeker tien of vijftien kilometers van die drie woonbeurtaf. Hoe moet zij daar komen? Ik persoonlijk heeft haar gedwong om een vergadering te beleiden in toel speelmanszaal. Als zij hier binnen is, dat kan zij of ik een leen praat. Want nog niet één van die mensen, Lemundray, Kamielmont en ex, oké Kamielmont, kom eens los, dat is Kamielmont uit. Maar Lemundray en Extension heeft haar nog nooit gezien niet. Helle weet hij hoe zij lijkt niet. We can't blame her, we must blame the ANC. Hoe komt als gevolg van die demarcation board? Nou wil ik net graag voor die leierskap hiervoor vragen. Wat moet die populatie wees wanneer daar een demarcation board is? Under correction, moet daar niet 2300 people in die facility wees niet? Ik kan het, want hij zegt dat rech was gekkeerd. Maar dat is ons kijk. Dat zeventien wijk het zet hem. Kijk waar le die Kalahari. Hoe stukkel die mensen met ambulance, kom eens wat voor haar ambulance? Ik denk die mensen, die ANC, ik druk vanmorgen op helle. Dit wat helle doen is onmenselijk. Hierhe die mensen gepaard van Bloomsomond. Wie van die ANC knows about Bloomsomond? Wat gaat helle nou maken? Weet hij hoe komt, zit hij vanmorgen hier? Kom ik ze voor i. Onze zo pat na twintig vierendwundig toe. En die ANC, helle weet bij een goed dat helle presentatie gaan val. Nou wil helle nog komen om weer af te... Da's vraagtekens. Ons moet kijken waar is die stronghold ANC? Maar ik zie helle vanmorgen op hier die auto van zeventien voor, helle laat Nelson Wandel zijn graf omdraai. Because dit wat helle doen is onmenselijk. Is onmenselijk. Moet hij daar boos stuk niet. Kijk wel ik onze hospitaale. Hier het ambulance heeft gebrand, hij daar een aangekrijgen, daar heeft niet. Ik heb bij Zamanisol, hoe is punt te gegeven voor hier die soortje hospital wat af gaan in die dreinen? Hier zie ik pil in hier, onmenselijk. I thank you.
Uh, please, please. Uh. Okay, continue.
Good morning, members of parliament. She greeted you in Arabic, I cannot do that, I'm sorry. And then in English, may the peace of God be with you. My, my name is Hajmumina Salina, Suliman, Suliman. Suliman, Suliman. I will speak Afrikaans because ninety-nine percent of the people in this hall behind me speak Afrikaans. I've been living in Uppington since nineteen seventy-four and I can tell you today, I was a strong ANC supporter, forefront, you can ask anybody. But I sadly have to say that I've switched sides. Ik heb borkies verhang. I blame not the ANC for this, they can blame themselves, but I blame the leadership. I switched to Arman Mashaba of Action SA. And I cannot say, this document in my hand, this thirty-one pages, I can't say yea and I can't say nay, it's too thick, it's too many pages. I just want to say to you that this demarcation board, you amalgamated so many wards into one big area. If we look at Lemundray, Kamielmont, ach, let's just leave Kamielmont now for the minute, Extension. You know, Kolksloot, I speak under correction, more or less ten kilometers away from this area. The council member, September, I forced her to come to us. Now, if I look at Kamiel, as I said, leave that Lemundray, Extension, specifically those two, that person, September, the poor person, we can't blame me, but those people have never even seen her. They do not know what she looks like. It's not her fault. She, we can't blame her, we must blame the ANC. The area is just too big. She can't service it. What will happen to service delivery? I want to know, what must the number of a population be before the demarcation board comes out? You tell me. In the Kalahari, seventeen wards amalgamated, ach, people really, ambulances. What ANC that there is inhuman, it's inhumane. I am here and I'm standing here. You know why I'm sitting here and waiting to say my say? Because twenty-four is around the corner, twenty-twenty-four is just around the corner. And I'm standing here and you come with this demarcation. And I'm saying this and I'm putting my hands up because you know what? You're looking for the ANC stronghold. We know. Nelson Wandel will turn in his grave, I'm telling you, will turn in his grave. You burnt ambulances down. Ach, mensen, you know what? Come to Zamanisol, no pills, no nothing, no, no medical, ach, no man, I can't do.
I'm not, most way. Okay. Uh, can I again say, maybe these were questions? I think, uh, you might be missing something as the Northern Cape. A message that you should be passing to government and the bill itself. The fact that you have a sparse population and vast areas, you might be communicating that indirectly. Uh, but it would have been good for you to communicate it directly, to say, when you constitute a ward in the Northern Cape, it is not like constituting a ward in Johannesburg. I think that's the message we are picking indirectly from what you are saying, whether you're putting it as a complaint or what, but we can get that sense. But it would have been good to hear it from people from here, to say a ward here. In fact, it is in the bill, by the way, whether we must consider the population or registered voters, it is in the bill, it's still an area of debate. Maybe you can interpret that.
Ik, ik denk die mensen van die Noordkap miss iets is so. Of ons miss iets. Het is zo goed geweest als het van helle zelf kon gekomen, want ik denk, als we naar die Noordkap kijken, is het een groot, groot area met de eeuwbevolking, spers, was maar min mensen. En een wijk hier in die Noordkap is niet zoze wijk in Goudting niet. Mijn als bij een mensen in een wijk is zo is minder mensen in die wijk in die grote. Zo dat is zo goed geweest om van etoer, maar niet zo tussenhakjes, by the way. Dit wordt in die wetsondwerp genoemd. Dat is moet kijken naar die geregistreerde stemmers, stemgerichtigdes in die wijk. Zo dat is daar. Maar ik denk, ik denk ons miss iets is zo, maar dat is zo goed geweest als het van ja vol kan, kom. Zo spreekt het wel aan, die stemgerichtigdes in een specifieke wijk. Maar die twee areas, bijvoorbeeld Noordkap en Goudting, verschil.
Uh, I was just preparing to take other hands. Uh, any further hands? You are number one, you are number two, number three, mama, yes, number four. I'm coming this side. Number one, two, three, four, yeah, number five, number six, number, where we are pinned there, number seven, number eight, at the back. I was open that night. Number, yeah, go, go. No, a man. Open your finger. Uh, how many chairs are left? It's full. Oh, okay, let's come. I've only we are pinned there, a man who? No, no, no. Asim so senai, let's remove the person who is repeating. Uh, remove the person who is repeating. Oh, go. Uh, come, come, number one, let's, let's not open another meeting, tell us.
Khueda, Khueda Aldi.
Uh, what are in the house, please? Yes.
Ik is Jayson Esso, ik is een raadslid voor die Democratische Allianz bijna die Dawid Kreyper Misspallety. En als een woner van Dawid Kreyper kan ons niet hier die bill ondersteunen. Hier die bill snijt die grens voor onze mensen en dus zo kom ons, niet kijken naar ongea ras geloof of politieke partij, ons moet niet gaan kijken naar wen wat hij is niet. Maar hier die bill raakt ons allemaal. Bij je dankje.
Good morning, members of parliament. Thank you. My name is Jason Esso and I am a member of the Democratic, uh, alliance from Ward One. I'm standing in front of you today as a member of the community and I'm saying that I we cannot support this bill irrespective whether we are black, white, colored or what we are politically, for the simple reason, because this law, this bill rather, cuts through our community, it divides our whole community irrespective of color, creed, race, political party. Thank you.
Number two. Good morning, everybody. A very warm welcome to our esteemed parliamentarians. Before I commence, allow me to thank our Lord and Savior for this auspicious assembly. If not for its grace and mercy, none of this would have been possible today. My name is Lionel Dewey and I'm a resident of Kakamas in the Kaiharib municipality. Kakamas is a city or a small town roughly ninety kilometers away from Uppington. I'm not sure if you all are familiar with that. Kaiharib consists of ten wards. Now, it's very peculiar how VDs were recognized or how wards were being issued. For example, if you look at the areas surrounding Kakamas, your homesteads especially, you have Lutzburg, which falls under Ward Seven, for example. You think of Sully, which is roughly two kilometers, might be a bit shorter in distance away, in proximity away from Lutzburg. Then we have, in Kakamas, we have Ward Three and we have Ward Four. And then just immediately after Kakamas, you have a city or, or, or homestead called Allied, Mashant and Ohrabis. Now, the issue that I have, and also I must apologize because I did not prior to this meeting had the opportunity to produce the bill, but when I came inside, I was issued one and I had the opportunity just to produce it very briefly, so it makes perfect sense. And I do, before I say anything else, I do acknowledge and I concur with what was said there because I feel personally that it does really, um, speak about the issues that we have here. And we will also, moving forward, draft a formal, then submit a formal letter, uh, but I just feel this is the platform where I need to raise these issues. I feel that, and I think the question was posed by the, by one of the speakers, I think it's Miss Suliman, I'm not, uh, quite sure, but I think she did touch on that as well. In order for a ward to be recognized as a ward in the Northern Cape, because we are so dense in population, you need to be 2,500 registered members in that VD or in that ward. So Ohrabis currently merged with Allied, Mashant as well as, um, Sully, which is very, very peculiar because you have an uneven number when it comes to that, where you could have merged, say for example, Lutzburg, which is just less than one kilometer, even one kilometer away from where you have Sully. So those two could have formed one ward that were recognized. Ohrabis, on the other hand, because of the vineyards around in that area and all the people that are fluctuating to that area on a regular basis, some of them are permanent residents now as well, forming more than 2,500. So I think if Ohrabis could have, could have had the opportunity also to be established as a ward, that would have helped us, uh, especially with the view of the upcoming elections as well. And then you could have said... And then you could have said, for example, Allied, Mashand, one as well. So in conclusion, I, and I believe that I've been looking around this venue today and I did not see anybody from my ward, but I think that what I am about to say resonates with everybody, that we in Kaayharib, Ward 3 especially, do accept this bill. But we will also, moving forward, draft a written submission where we just explain briefly as to what we think would have, would help us moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, oh, you don't interpret now when it is English? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Number, eh, number three.
Mijn naam is Francina en mijn vandaag is september. Ik had baaien vraag om te vraag. Maar mijn eerste vraag is: hoe komt word vergadering gehouden? Dat weet die publiek niet hierbijte. Hoe komt word het vergadering gehouden? Ik had gisterend gehoord, daar is een vergadering. Waar oor gaat niet vergaderen? Nee, ik weet niet. Ik wil weten waar oor gaan vergaderings. Want ik mis die vergadering niet. Ik hou daarvan om te weten waar die wereld op gehe. Als praat van dag van Mandela, wie weet waar oor van Mandela toegegaan? Wie kan voor mij zeggen? Ik heb voor de ANC ondergrond gewerkt. Vandaag is ik een park bij de ANC. Ik is hier park niet. Ramaphosa had gezegd, als hij terugkom, ik stuur jullie, ik vraag jullie niet, ik zei jullie meneer. Lev praat van Ramaphosa, hoe komt het in die voren toegekomen? Uppington is die feilste wereld. Die villes wordt net hierheen gevoe. Maar ze paal het uit krab op. Dan heb ik gewoon ik net weer mijn villes daar meer. Als me ze paal het uit die villes weg gaat, dan zal daar die villes gevoe worden niet. Ik is geboren 1938. Ik is Abraham Holborn Septemberse kleinkje, de achterkleinkje. Die plaats is gebijn op die hogere rechtshof. Maar die plaats is nog nooit voor die Septembers gekomen afgeheen niet. Ik wil weten hoe komt niet? Ramaphosa moet zijn werk doen. Ik en Ramaphosa, ik noem hem Ramaphosa, ik wil niet president zijn niet. Want ons het samen voor die ANC gewerkt. Samen. 72 jaar oud. Toen los ik die werk om beter zo kom werk voor die ANC. Maar dat is die dankje wat ik vandaag terrij. Want al die mensen wat hier zit, als mensen, allemaal voor die ANC gestem. Maar wat doen die ANC? Daar is koosbak, is hier Stijlney Peterson wat hier gezet is. Hij zet per 12,2 miljoen rand binnen zijn huis. Daar wil ik weten, wie is die leier? Maar ik zei voor je dankje, dat jullie is die leiers. Maar jullie mag je, jullie zijn oren toe. Voor een meisje, die vaak niet. Waag dat zo wees, dat is wat ik wil weten. Mag dat zo wees, dat jullie jullie zijn oren toe druk? Als een meisje komt bij jou klachten naartoe komen. Ik wil die antwoord nou, jij. En die mensen. Ik kom mijn antwoord van jullie af, meneer. Die mensen, ons wordt gebedrieg. Ons wordt gelieg. Ons wordt geld betaal voor een huis dat jij ingezet is. Gisterend en vormore, die radio, die muziek, die televisie, weergezegd van 50 miljoen wat ingezet is voor mensen wat huis er ingezet is. Als het blijft, meneer, geef er ook mijn vrouw. Kom met die waarheid, uitzeggen voor ons waarin toe gaan dat je geld. Uitzeggen voor ons waarin toe gaan dat je geld. Abraham Holborns, hij had toen die plaats volop steely, hij had bij die witman gekregen. Prinses, koningin Elizabeth, en dat huis was voor hem gegeven. 38, waar David Krepper op staan, is Abraham Holbornse grond. David Krepper waren, voor ons zo stwareke. Die kracht wordt sommigen net zo afgesnijd. De betaal je die kracht? Morgen is jou huis geblokkt, jij kracht, kom je dieren. Ik wil de antwoorden, jij, op wat moet gedaan wordt. Mijn naam is Francina, geboren 1938, mijn vandaag is september. Ik had nog.
Siakela, mag ik u dit tuakken noog, of kun ze u dolieken, Mademoiselle?
Kan ik stil hebben, hier als een blae, als moet die tolk lijst er?
I'm gonna do my best. Ik ga, Tani Francina, ik ga mijn best doen om te doen wat Tani gedaan heeft door. Ik ga mijn best doen. My name is Francina September and I was born in 1938. I just want to say that I'm curious. I want to know when there's meetings. I want to know what's happening in the world. You hold this meeting while the public outside doesn't know what's happening. They don't know what about this meeting and what's being said here. Last night, I heard about this meeting. I want to tell you that I am a very strong, I was undercover for the ANC. I worked for the ANC. There's one thing I want to tell you. Uppington looks like a refuse removal dump. All the rubbish is in Uppington. Nobody removes it. It looks terrible. Today, the ANC is not what it's supposed to be. You can call Ramaphosa, I won't call him president. Al sommigen call him Ramaphosa. You can go tell him, he must do his work. We Septembers, we won our farm in the High Court. He has never given us that farm. Up until today, that farm has not been given back to the Septembers. In 1972, I left my job and I came to work only for the ANC. But what's happening now is not right. Sally Peterson, he built a house for 12,2 million, the guy with the food parcels. He built his house for 12,2 million. You lied to us. What happened last night, I watched on the TV, 15, 15 million rand claims on TV. Where is that money? That farm of September's wasn't given to us by white people. Queen Elizabeth gave us that farm. He and she gave us that farm. Where is the farm? It's still not with us. You must stop lying to us. Find out, find out why that farm is not being given back to us Septembers.
Morgen. Ramaphosa. Goeiemore. Ik is Marina Rens, 82, 20 Skulbrugstraat, Progress. Zo is wat ik geleistert en zo is ik kapadeer onze notas gegane. Stem ik niet samen die bouw niet. En dan wil ik inkom bij onze afbagening. Die afbagening stem ik wickie meer samen. Want dit raakt ons mensen bij je, vooral onze raadleden, kom niet uit. Onze raadleden, voor hun toe. Onze raadleden kom niet uit bij jullese mensen niet. Want daar was bij je voorbeelden genoemd van Sesbro, week elf. Week elf is afgebagen. Twee scholen wat in mij week is. Die stapafstand, ik stap net 5 minuten van mij eens af, naar Orange Over of Fransis gis toe. Maar daar die twee scholen val onder week elf. Wat bij je verkeerd is. Hoekom kan die scholen niet nabij gebracht worden in die wijk waar aan julle nabij is zie? De hospital is jaal enigste hospital hier in soortie wat in mij week valt. En dan wil ik inkom bij, daar gaan niks kinderskolen van Sesbro, van week elfse mensen, bij die twee scholen niet. Maar julle val onder Sesbro. En die raadslid is die daar, die raadslid blij in week elf. Nou, ik vraag, kan een raadslid niet dien in zijn wijk wat na aan hem is zie? Kenen die ander gedeelte wat ver van zijn wijk af is? In jillese wijk invalling. Dus hoe ik dit, van in week twee, week twee is een raadslid, blij niet in zijn week twee niet. Week twee is een raadslid, blij niet in de week twee niet. En als een mens klacht is, moet een dien in die wijk waarin jij blij. En jouw raadslid blij niet in jouw wijkje. Hoe denk jullie, hoe met ons voel? Die zielde met Ridfontein. Mag dat blijne Ridfontein? Maar die wijk is hierbij Melkstrom. Een gedeelte van Melkstrom. Dit is misschien rechtverdigd tegen ons mensen niet. En dan voel ik, als die wijk is zo uitbreid, bring, die, die, ook kan ik dus zeggen, die beskaving, die ontwikkeling, bringen naar die mensen toe. Toen er af polistaties gebouwd wordt, liet daar 24-ehir klinieken is, liet daar banken is. Want kijk net hier die week 15. Die raadslid bereik wickie zijn mensen niet, waarin week 15 strek, van af hier de pad. Strek bij 15 tot door ander kan. Die raadslid bereik je zijn mensen niet en die gemeenschap ken die die raadslid die. En laat ons altijd als gemeenschap geïnvoer wordt, waarin er zulke afbagenings gedaan wordt. Want ons moet die gemeenschap betrek bij je afbagening. Ons moet die gemeenschap betrek, ah, betrek, zullen die gemeenschap kan zeggen, één, twee, drie en vier. Want de delapje ons niet om alleen nog beschlijten. En die mensen wat in die gemeenschap blij, julle bereik jillese mensen niet. Want Blikis, ons moet naar hier die polistatie toe komen. En dat was de polistatie geweest, al was het daarbij die sivie. Ons moet hier naartoe komen, bij julle os die polistatie en in die tijd als je hier komt, daar vergeert die wapen voor me, je me nog. Want is de ver? Daar beschlijf je je makke je zakje. En makke nog een zak, daar, daar wordt die zak 100 tier uitgestel. Like je moet maar beschlijf, ik ga niet meer hoofd doen niet. Zo al hier die goeders moet gekijken wordt, want het is een griep in die hospital, en onze leiers rond. Ons kan niks onze hospital besoekje. Onze brand weer val uit mekaar is. Al hier die staatsdepartementen van ons collegelen met opstand en doen door to door samen met ons en gaan kijken zelf, van bellen mens voor die roalle wat oorloop. Dan wordt het van je hand geweest, overlijk om more. Bijl jij voor water. Wat nou een groot lekkasie is, dat is het probleem, jij moet jarrewach. Zo waar naartoe is ons een stad waar die gemeenschap is. Nieuwe mensen. Ons sla elke dag, ons zien elke dag, hier is naast zo goeders over TV. Maar onze klaan val op doven oren, daar wil ik weten wat heet geword van de piepen zal gaan. Ons moet zeggen en jullie moet doen, wat het van dit geword? Maar die als zij jullie, wat die regering is, en ons moet doen, wat het van die wat de pelle beginsels gerak. Zullen het dus teruggaan? En onze stukjes bij mekaar krab en bouwen onze fouten? Baie dankje.
Good morning, members of parliament. My name is Marina Rens and I'm from Progress. And I've listened to what's been said here and I must say I cannot support this bill. Because I do not agree with the demarcation. The council members don't live within the wards and the people where they are elected. But in my area, there are two schools within walking distance from where I live. But those schools are on a different ward. So my children can't go there. Where I live, the only municipal service or the only service building that there is is an hospital. Ward council members have to live in the ward where they serve. How can they not live, like in Ward 2 for instance? That council member doesn't even live in Ward 2. How can he be of service of that ward if he doesn't live there? Ridfontein, Naelstrom, it's not right. Those ward members and council members do not live in those specific wards. And if you develop a ward or you amalgamate, bring services to that ward. Bring the police station, ambulance, ATM, a school. You know, there, where I live, I think the road is right here. Then, there is the road. You have to start engaging with the community when you do this demarcation because you know what? Look at Blikis, another example. When I go to Blikis for service, by the time I get there, I forgot what I've came to do there because it's so far. Then I have to go back. I can't, I can't remember what I have to do. I think you must come. And then, we do a door to door. We walk and do a door to door. And we go back and we look at all the dilapidated fire trucks, the sewage spills. When you phone for something, there's no answer when you got service for them in useability. And all our complaints fall on deaf ears. I'm standing here today and I'm asking you nicely, can't we bring out all the little pieces back together again and start from the beginning? Thank you.
Number five.
Molwijn in onke, tungu eni mompe, die so ka Rimfasmak, ga se kei Garib e wot hen. Ik had geschreven, ik zal in die boeken, ik zal in Afrikaans praten. Zo ik wil mij net in mijn eie tal geëxpressen, want ik is het klasse. Eh, leierskap, ons is blij eerlijk gekom voor dit ele, hier die wetgeving voor toepassing plaats. Want ik is hoop voor de future politieke partij wat nou met die missvaliteit, eh, verkiezing geontstaan is. Der verkeerde god wat niet wil rech komen niet. Zo ik blij in wot hen en kei Garib. Als het zegt, ons stem niet met die wetgeving samen niet. Wil ik één voorbeeld maken. En die voorbeeld nou, hier dacht zit is mee een crisis. Onze de polistatie, splinternieuwe polistatie in wot hen gekregen. Daar is twee, eh, eh, gemeenschaps, eh, eh, VDs. Das Friedesfallay waar ik vandaan kom, ik kloossas. Das Rimfasmak waar die namas vandaan kom, maar dat is één wort, ons is één Rimfasmak. Daar de nieuwe polistatie is gebouwd. Ons moet nou hoor, dat die hele tijd was, is geserv van Oghrabis polistatie. Want is makkelijk uit Friedesfallay, uit Blauwput, uit voorbij naar Oghrabis polistatie te noemen, dus hoor ons met Rimfasmak toch aan. Als het praat van wasness, van hier die Noordkap, is het bij je moeilijk. Dat maakt voor ons mensen bij je ongemakkelijk om bij plekken uit te komen. Onze mensen het niet werkt niet. Onze mensen het niet geldt niet om voertuigen te hier om bij dat ver plek uit te komen niet. Die voorbeeld wat ik van praat, die polistatie woers nou, ons moet daar gaan verdiensten. In Rimfasmak. Die polistatie is moeilijk, 16 kilo's van waar ik blij, naar die polistatie toe waar hij is. 16 kilometers moet ik rij. Als ik hier voertuig had, ik moet stap om iemand op antetla. Wanneer kom ik daar? Daar is wild, wilderness, want ons is in die veil wat mij kan doodmaken, tiere, you name them. Zo het is wat het spraat van. Hier die bill is niet rech, hij past niet. Die ele moet kom en kom kijken. Want ons wat op die grond blij, is die mensen wat zitke. Ik is blij dat die voorzitter genoemd. Onszelf moet het noemen. Dat Noordkap, eh, bij je, ons is bij je min mensen, maar ons blij bij je wijk uit mekaar uit. En dus hoe ze bij mekaar kan komen niet. Zo ik stem niet samen als hoop voor de future met hier die wetgeving niet. Baie dankje.
Members of parliament, good afternoon, honorable members. My name is Emmy Mompe. And I greeted you in easy cause, of course, that's my home tongue, but I said for these papers I will speak Africans. You came here today. Thank you for bringing this bill to us. I am standing for hope for the future, for the, for the election, for Ward 10, Kaayharib. But I cannot say that I agree with this bill. I want to say that a new police station was built. Now, before I say to that point, I just want to say that in Friedesfallay, there's where the kloossas live, these kloossas, and Rimfasmak is where the namas live. Now, that is one ward. The nearest police station is Oghrabis. Now, that's more or less 16 kilometers from. Now, that's more or less 16 kilometers from where I live. So if I want to go and lay a complaint at the police station, I have to walk there. There's no money, there's no work to hire or to rent a vehicle or to get transport, so I have to walk. And while I'm walking there, I'm not safe. You know, there's wild animals there, like tigers and everything. They can kill me. And I'm glad, Chair, that you mentioned that the Northern Cape and Houting, the wards difference and the vastness of the Northern Cape. It's very difficult for us to get to services in this Northern Cape. Because the wards are so, so far and the areas are so vast and big. It's very difficult for us to, to get to places. And if there's a service, a police station in one area, sometimes you have to go past that one because now we can't go to the closest, we must go to a different one. So being, getting service delivery is very, very difficult, difficult for us. So I just wanted to say, as I said, I stand for hope for the future and I am, I'm glad that you came here today. Thank you.
Goee ma dag, mijn naam is Michael McKay. Ek is van Covid, ek blij in Covid Valley, blij dis in week één en week 15. Ek wil net as een wonder van Covid Valley say, ons stem nie sam dat ons moet geskuiw word van uit Covid Valley uit na week 13 toe nie. Ons wil in week, eh, week 15 of in week één gedeel word. En as ons het in Covid Valley blij, ons het geen sanit, ons het geen sanitatie, geen water daar so nie, ons moet onze eië planen maak om water te kreeg daar. Ons is die rech geskuiw nie zo, ons graag vraag, kan julle voor ons kom helpen, voor ons rech skuiw, laat onze government voor ons rech skuiw of wie misvalite wat die bij ons is, voor ons rech skuiw. Want ons blij nos is, ons wil daar so elk in maak net see eië ding so, kom help ons, laat ons op ons, laat ons rech blij, ons het ook nie kracht daar waar ons blij nie.
Good afternoon, members of parliament, my name is Michael McKay. And I want to say that I live in Covid Valley, Ward One to Fifteen, One and Fifteen. Um, just want to say that we in Covid Valley do not want to go to Ward Thirteen. We want to be rearranged either One or Five. Or Fifteen, rather. But please come and help us to rearrange ourselves because we're just canning on there on our own. We've got no, no order, there's no structure. Come and help us to rearrange ourselves. We also want to say that we don't have any sanitation, no clean water and no electricity. So please come and help us, come as sisters, so that we can rearrange ourselves. Kom ramskuk, ons beke rech as je blijf.
Eh, number seven.
Good day, my name is Charlotte April. I'm from Keigharip, Ward Two. Klaus Ten outlines the process must be handled by appointed of the selection panel of the board. We submit that process must be handled by parliament. And now left only a selection that is appointed by a minister. For, sorry. For more open and accountable process, parliament. Ek moet omnolies, klimi bralies, sorry.
I don't have my gloves, I'm sorry.
For, for more accountable process, parliament is the most suitable. Wat kan man die phone nou aan? Alright. Okay, thank you. For a more open and accountable process, parliament is the most suitable situation to conduct the selection process for the appointment of the board members. Not a selection panel appointment by a minister, minister. Thank you.
No, don't dance, don't. Eemtregas, lando dias mochale. So koopa, bent dan ons soi. Eh, the next one.
Ja, bij je dankie. Eh, Elvis van ZFM, Sikhepe as he fan. Eh, blij in Pabalelo. Ek is ongelukkig, ién van die man wat nou nie kan minen kla rondom die regering van die dagie. Eh, helle beteken voor ons bij je. Maar ons zal ook nie kan say dat helle nie nog meerder voor ons moet beteken nie. Helle kan ook voor ons bij je meerder beteken, as het luf voor ons ei dageluk beteken. Nou, die ander enikey is, ek is bij je blij om te zien dat onze leiers afgekom met grond toe. Maar die ene wat ek net wil zeker ook maak. Dat moet nou nie, eh, situatie is waar dat kla beschlipte gemaak is. En dan kom ken, ién nou net ongelukkig voor ons. Is nou net een proces wat net gestoot isie. Want die ding is een bij je belangrik en een groot ding. To ek hem der gaan, to besef ik, uit ZFM uit alleen, as daar nou bezig, as hier die ding der gaan, dan skuiw we dat twee misvalitee werk van ZFM af. En dan kom raak dat automatisch voor ZFM. En ons het ongelukkig is nou halle tietie eh, wat ons so samit die persoonen werk wat die demarcation nou zal voor ons kom skier. En as ek hem kijk, van daar danom, die minige ondek is, nou moet die mensen weg gaan van ons af. Wie is die persoonen wat nou ongelukkig nie benefit bij die proces daarie? En wat nou wil graag wil benefit bij die proces? En is daar soe ding is, kom julle grond toe naar ons toe weer met antwoorden, laat ons kan die ding brieer verstaan. Want soos ons 'm nou zien, glo ekie ons, dat is één mens wat syl die ding wil graag wil ondersteen nie. Eh, ek wil ook nie te lang is op die ding, want ons gaan nou later die sylle goeders ooren oors say, wat die vorige sprekers is say, maar maar ek opstand is dat, ek Elvis Bongani Sikhepe, ek stiende die bal nie. Bij je dankie.
Good afternoon, members of parliament, I'm Elvis Sikhepe from ZFM. And I just want to say before I start, unfortunately, I'm not one of those people who can say that about government that you're not doing anything for us. You definitely are doing stuff for us, but I think you can do more, we can always do more. And I'm happy to see that the leaders in front of us came down to us today to grassroots level to discuss this with us. But I do hope that this is not just a tick box or just a step in a process and that this decision has already been made and that we will not be consulted with again to come back. I hope it's not like that. Um, specifically with this bill, um, I've, I've got some questions here. There's two municipalities that I know that were moved out of the area ZFM. And that's going to be a problem, a problem for us. I can see that coming. We've been working a while together now with the people from the demarcation and since the mines are being discovered, these people left us. So I'm just want to know, will you come back to us to speak to us again? To consult with us with what regards to how we feel about this bill? And I also want to also honor your request to not repeat myself saying the same thing over and over and over again. Because that was also your request and I acknowledge that. But please, I just want to say then finally that I cannot support this bill at this stage the way it is. Thank you.
Spreding case for that gentleman and another one who wanted to repeat. But one little information that came to me is to say they are councillors. And if they went through the bill, they would have understood it to say it excludes all of us as public representatives to participate in anything. Eh, because we are public representatives. So I will not allow them because of that information. And if there are any further hands, I can still take them. Eh, you are number one, eh, yourself and number two, you can come both. Then at the back, number three, with the red one. Number four, number five, number six, eh, you are repeating. Number seven, yeah. Oh, lande ela, eemtregas, can you follow? Then that other hand, yes. That other hand, you are the last one. Can you see that we are allowing everybody to speak? And so let's that, that might be the last round. Is there anybody who would die if, no, come in, I allow you in. Is there any other person who might die if I don't include them in the list? Eh, you go, oh, you are the last one. Eh, I've told you spoke already, go back.
Met lage praat, gaan terug.
Eh, can we now start? Okay? You want to interpret something? Okay. Now, I've informed them, they must understand English, no. They must understand it.
Number one. Okay, time. Um. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, my name is Choy Cione, the name Moreki. I'm from Daniel Scale. Um, um, I, I, I just want to start with saying that, um, we have been learning for this kind of opportunity for a very long time for us to come and express, um, our dissatisfaction to how things are being orchestrated or being done, you know? And it puts one in a position to, to, to question certain criterias to how things are being done in this province. Um, it's a pity we came late due to transport organization, but that's another matter to discuss. But the initial issue that one should look into is correctly said that the province that we belong to is very vast. And the vastness of our province makes it difficult for us to access certain, um, services, you know, if one has to put in that context. Um, correctly said, yes. But what does the government do when one strives and lives are put on the line for one to access services to, to prevent, um, let's say deadly calls? Let me start with this one. In Daniel Scale, where I come from, we say the bill has failed us dismal to how it was done in the beginning. We can start by questioning the zoning. How was it done for, for Daniel Scale or Katalopele municipality to fall under ZFM? It does not make sense. We are eighty-two kilometers away from Guruman, which is JTG. Hundred and sixty kilometers away from Kimberley, which is Francis Barth. Now, we are traveling three hundred and, three hundred kilometers to ZFM to access services. Now, let's look into it. How, how, how do, does it happen? I will make reference to this. In 2019, I had my cousin's sister who broke her leg. Now, we are a disadvantaged family where we do not have resources in terms of capital and all that. So we had to wait for a minimum of four weeks for, for our cousin's sister to be released from hospital. We never visited her in a single day. But if she was on eighty-two kilometers, which was, which was going to cost us almost a minimum amount of forty bucks to go and visit her. Now, how much does it cost me to travel for her three hundred kilometers? Let's do the math. Let me go to another point. My other point is, let's talk about the issue of, um, our clinic. We are the, I believe in this province, Daniel Scale is the only facility which we have, where a clinic closes around half past three. Short staff, we have, we don't know what a doctor is. We have never saw a doctor in a period of ten years. I might be wrong, but I believe that we have never saw a doctor. We need to travel to see a doctor through appointments to Kimberley. When we get to Postmansberg, we don't, we hardly see a doctor, right? Our police stations are getting closed. We are the only town in this province where you will find out we hardly have staff. We hardly have police vans. We have nothing, nothing at all. So if one should put this into the correct proper plan to say that Daniel Scale is one of the places that can stand here and say we are being misrepresented at all costs. We are not going to incline politics with this. We are going to talk about the demarcation itself. Let's not incline politics with this. Because if we dwell into politics, then we are going to blow this out of proportion. Clinics, total failure, we don't have clinics in locals. In twenty-two years, us being under ZFM, we have never saw such. Um, police, we don't have staff. We are understaffed, like seriously, we don't have staff. Medicine is another issue. We don't have such, like zero. Representation in the ZFM, I can start with simple things. If one has to look into this. Ever since we've been ZFM, in all governmental stakeholders, your governmental institution, your SASSA, your DSD, you name them, all of them. We don't even have a single employee in those, those governmental institu- institution. Now, we ask question, what criterias are being used for recruiting for twenty-two years? So it's a clear indication that the distance is a problem for us to fall under ZFM. So the application which was made was only made because of we did not benefit anything from ZFM. The government should look into it to how the zoning of this process should favor the people of Katalopele because of under no circumstance, whatever that is happening there favors Katalopele. Let's talk about RDPs. The last time I saw an RDP being erected in or built in Katalopele was ten years back or fifteen years back. There was never an RDP, a single RDP being built. One could ask a question, what is happening in Katalopele for it not to be developed? A simple RDP, where the government gazette clearly states that each and every year, there's almost three hundred houses that should be built. We have never tasted a single house in three hundred years. I mean, in three, in fifteen years, sorry for my, for my wrong statement. So if we can sit for fifteen years and not have a single RDP, which is a ride to a South African citizen, then that's a mistake, there's something that is not happening in that town. We've got informal settlements that are being developed on a daily basis, in a weekly basis. Not even a single is being electrified or has, eh, water access. Only through private stakeholders are we accessing that. Only through private stakeholders are we accessing that. So through government, we are being failed. But through private sector, they are making meet end to make sure that we access such. So we are pleading with government. The process here is good, it's in a regional level. But the most affected communities, which are having problems, are on those municipalities on the local level, which you should have supposed to have visited and hear the frustration on the local level. Because of now, it's only minimal where you will hear, but not see. So we would urge that go to those affected communities whenever they express whatever difficulties they are facing so that you can see it. Because now we are saying, but you do not have the proper clue to what are we talking about. Thank you very much.
Now, number two.
To my honorable members, the community, the people, the people of the province, to me this way. And I cannot give you from Daniel Scale and Katello Pelle municipality. I'm a student of Daniel Scale. I'm a student of ZFM. I see a speech, it's not like something whereby we have to be shy of it. I'm, I'm, I will, I will just add on what my homeboy has said. Today, I'm standing here, I'm thirty, I'm thirty-eight years old. Now think for yourself. At thirty-eight-year-old, unemployed, I'm a leader of hashtag African campaign, hashtag unemployment, I'm a student of Daniel Scale. Whereby we tackle private sector in the municipality. But we are, we are seen as criminals today. If you say, I'm unemployed, I'm hungry, if you fight for hunger, if you hunger in Daniel Scale, you became a problem, you are a criminal. What you want means. On, on the matter of saying I'm thirty-eight years old.
Ik zoek weer eens koos. Maar ik kreeg nie koos en mien moeder is honger. Mien moeder zei we mij elke dag mien zie en gaan. We gaan zoek brood. Ik is elke dag op die voet en mien moeder zei staan op. Doe ons zo mien zie. En ik zeg dank je voor God. Maar wens ze wil ik net bekend maak. Dat ek is hier verdangen hier. Ik is net voor een reden hier. Ik wil net eh onze jeugd, onze leer. Ons moet bij elkaar staan. Ons elkaar bij het staan vandaag om iets te doen wat bij je belangrijk is. Wens wil ik ons net se. Ons moet bij elkaar bij staan. Nien net te even van nauw, ben nauwerenheid. Te even van goedheid en glijheid. Goedheid is ons leven nie weer. Maar wens wil ik net dit se. Ons moet bij elkaar bij staan. Kote namt landje, mku lu ku lu Jehovah. Say to me, Temba, speak. Kote, oh, my man, da. Spirit, speak to you everyone. And today, I want to say everything must be do right. And I want to think, uh, thank our leaders. I believe that there is hope in you. There is hope in everyone. I want to talk to you to help us. Help us each and every day to stand as by. Education is the key. Last, last weekend, last month, I was there at progress. I was looking for a job. That guy is take me, my, the C L O take my C V. He put it inside. Inside his pocket, I tell him, I want job. I want a job. He tell me, hi, there is no job. But I want a job. My mother say, call my son and look for a job. But nothing will be remember. I'm just a victim of nothing. What is this of this parliament? Hi, corner. I just want you to say today, help us, help us, help us each and everyone. Young ones, the old ones, our mothers is suffering here. What will happen today? Tomorrow, we don't know. I want you people to help us. Thank you.
Very short summary in the beginning. I just want to say that um I am on this earth now. I'm not quite sure if it's twenty five or twenty seven. Was it twenty seven, then he said twenty five on this earth. Twenty seven. So twenty seven years on this, on this earth. And all of our youth, the main, main message is that we as youth has to stand together. I'm hungry. My mom says to go find a job. But I'm saying that we are all here for good reason. And that reason is that the youth of today must stand together, not only in good times, but also in tough times. Thank you.
Next, it's number four.
To be a North couple. Like a man what Africans praat, but in week fifteen blei al drie en twintig jaar. Al tel paai gebouw wat je geld gestiel is. I have three companies in Hui, week fifteen. Onze hees kan nie gebouw wordie. Onze dakke lek. Deze met die liggie die broep, en ik kreeg nie veel. Ik was al in Kimberley geweest. Met die wetgever. Daar in Kimberley en Galleshouwe. Had me hart geleester voor mien gemeenschap. Dus werd mien papiere voor ielop neergeleid. Om hier liegt er hier te hoor. Daar is ente namers al op. Noch een keepe namers. Ik geem mijne voor i, en voor i helen ammene bijtafel. Nu vind ik ikie. Hier die manier nog iets geseien is, hij jong man. Had zij twintig of negentig jaar oud. En ek is nou al amper vijftig. Like een enig zestig jaar van dank. Voor jullie gemeenschap van Apinten, week fifteen. En het is me helen nie voor allemaal. Noe ekel vraag vandaag, uit me hartie. Het getlaa oor die misspalle, tiet ook al. Helaas vieze groot probleem voor mij oor die algemeen. Die sopkom bijzwaard ook om toe gemaak word. Ik werkie. Ik wil de oor die draad plemme, alles hulle moeendelen bestiel me maak en sierbrun. Die helaar verhaersed. Het must ook kunnen. Zeit must ook eis. Ik wil iets leegpraatie. Die het must ook eis. Als hij het honger slaap, wat maak ie? Wat maak ie? Ik kan nie verstaan dat mij, ik wil nie politiek die een mens is, hij man ook geseitie. Ons allemaal stem voor Nelson Mandela, als je ook doet. Ik stem hem nou nog onder die graf. Kom na zeventig jaar en doe, die me nou dank nou. Ons blei, hoeveel jaar blei ons nog ie? Drie en twintig jaar, soos vier jaar meerder. As die, as die drie en twintig jaar. Wat man delei die tronkend kom. Doe zele, hij pin het om, zele zele man par, hij zeet sim voor die kinders. Sim voor die kinders. Ons wat die kinders is van juli land. Word nog om een acht. Maar jammer, ik wil hoe verder gaan met die zat. Like die wetgever gezien, hij papiel hem is voorie. Wat je capes. Wat barit praat, behavon ek kom. Gaak Kimberley ba jale, must amal van ek kom. Haak, ik moet lari.
Uh, your time is up. Ja, wule. Er kaam me, interpretation first.
Good afternoon, members of parliament. My name is Isaac Ruijbeij. I cannot try and imitate, I will do my best. But if I have to. There were three companies involved in Ward fifteen to try and build homes for us. Still not done. I'm standing in front of you and I gave you my papers there. It's chopped from Kimberly Legislative. I can't get work. As that young person said before me, there is no work. I gave my papers to you. He's been on this earth, what did he say? Twenty five, twenty seven years. I've been, I'm nearly fifty. Also no work. I just have to say, but in general, I have a problem with the municipality. They generally a problem for me. I'm hungry. I'm very hungry. I have to climb over my auntie's fence to go and eat oranges so that my stomach can get sour. But I want to ask you. You have a house. Don't you? You have children. If they are hungry, sir, I respect you. But what do you do if they're hungry? What do you do? I just want to know, what do you do when they're hungry? Everybody voted for Nelson Mandela. He was twenty seven years in prison. How long have we been living here? Twenty three years, so it's like four years more. And when he came out of prison, he gave, says, give that money to the children. Just give it to all the children. My papers there in front of you, I told you it's shut from Kimberly. They don't give me work. There's no work. Please, people. I'm an honest person. God saw that he must send his son down our back to earth because we are hungry. Please. Just give us houses in Ward fifteen. And now that woman said Ward five as well. Just give us our homes, please, man. Thank you. I respect you, sir. I do, I respect you.
Uh, number four.
Uh, good day, good day, everybody. Uh. My name is Dark Pohisho Jacobs, all the way from Katalopele. Uh, honoraries, as seated. Can we please look at the bill whereby it says it's granting a minister that will be appointed for this demarcation? Hence, this is a plea when going back to report back. Can this not be politicalized? Can it be an open and fair discussion as to say, when making this appointment of, of this minister? Can we consider all the factors that are contributing negatively and positively? We shall not forget that the people, the people shall govern. Hence, what have went through to, uh, what the bill says, of which I understand is a draft, is not yet implemented and amended. So, with that being said, with the ten years that the bill says that it can only by then be revisited. If the minister is to make decisions based on physi, uh, personal factors, on influential factors that will be driven upon by those that are in power. Why can it not be let the people speak and let what the people have spoken be what controls this whole process of demarcation or whatsoever? Whether you are demarcating or you do, uh, away with such and stay where you are. Now, I would like you guys to take into consideration within the Northern Cape, we are faced with a new pandemic, of which is a social ill, of which is drugs, lack of jobs. We are faced with a pandemic that is very frustrating, which is a financial constraint to many families. You can never have a household of seven people depending on Sasa grant only. Like promised by our president, there shall be jobs provided. There will be cre, jobs created. We have a solar plant that's being built currently. But with this demarcation, I believe there's influence from those in power to say, shut these ones out, employ these ones, shut these ones out, employ these ones. The people shall govern. I believe that this bill should have been driven upon the draft. It should have been driven by the people shall govern. And not to say, we are in power. We gonna elect a minister that will handle this whole demarcation process. Let it be open. Let it consist of stakeholders from various sectors. Furthermore, I would like to say this. As much as this minister will be granted powers, can that minister make what we call sober decisions? Not influence decisions? Because I'm not here to comment about the shortcomings that we are faced with within Katalopele. I'm here based on the bill because of, this is a platform to discuss the bill. I believe there is a time to come whereby inputs are now to be made, whereby decisions will have to be made, whether we are demarcating or we are staying or we are creating our own district. To say this, this municipality, we are forming what we are calling a coalition to say we are building our own district. So right now, we are faced with many challenges. And I believe as members of parliament, on your different positions as seated, some of the things that have been raised here today, they are disheartening to you guys. You may have not heard true to say, but this is the shortcomings of the Northern Cape. This is the shortcomings of such town and such town. But let this be an eye opener. Let us not be united only when it comes, there are time for votes. Let us be united irrespective of what's transpiring. If I have to say, if I look into the Northern Cape with a pandemic of drugs, I'm still longing to see a rehabilitation, rehabilitation center being built that can help those that want to change for a better future. But after change, where does this person go? Because they are being captured to say, you will never get these because of opportunities are not given. Stop shutting out the less fortunate. Because they are the most vulnerable. When coming vote times, you package him with a hamper. Vote for me, vote for me, I will bring change for you. With this bill, if I look at the ten years, I will be thirty one years from now on. Forty one years. If I have to wait for that ten years to say, minister, take a decision that will benefit me. Small SMEs, give them that advantage, progress them, elevate them. Stop capturing them to say, weinawo tendera naket la jahele. According to what the bill says, the bill, what I've read on the bill, is very disheartening. Because of, if we have now to make the written submissions, that's where everybody will now say, but I'm moving for you, I'm going there. Which is something that's very disheartening. We shall overcome. I thank you.
Number five.
Uh, good day. My name is Isaac Ruijbeij. Uh, I'm also from Katalopele. Uh. My fellow brothers, or let me call them my homeboys, they have set a handful. Uh, the last person who was speaking here. He reminded me of a situation that happened last week, Thursday. Uh, a shanty was burning. It was very cold. Ten o'clock in the night. They called us. I'm one of, uh, leaders in the community. They called us. We went there. We tried to make, to reach, uh, the mines and whatsoever. They told us, no, we are waiting for a call from Apinten before we release, uh, the emergency services to go and help there. Uh, the demarcation board. Uh, truly speaking, we as Katalopele, we love Apinten because we are nearer to Ograbis and whatsoever. But we are not benefiting anything from Apinten. We are losing. And we are asking, set our people free. You can go now to, uh, the solar plant that is being built now presently. Uh, you will find Katalopele residents, you will find plus minus twenty there. But there works plus minus three hundred people. They said the decision was taken by the district. So the district is failing us. In our municipality, when coming to, uh, our clinic, you can ask whoever was here from Durnescale. We sometimes bother the mayor, who is, I think I have seen our mayor is also here. We bother him. We said, now you have to call, uh, nine one one because they say the ambulance is in Kimber. When you phone for someone, you phone someone. Uh, he is sitting in Apinten, you are in Durnescale, you phone. That individual say the ambulance is in Kimber. You say, hey ma, yes, the ambulance, I can see it. He say, don't, oh, Saka on politica, I tell you, the ambulance is in Kimber. What's that? We are not benefiting anything. But, uh, it's a humble plea uh, from the community of Katalopele. Uh, set us free from Apinten. We are not saying we don't love Apinten, we love it because, uh, I come here concurrently, sometimes two times a month and so on. But what will it help? Our people are suffering at Katalopele. Uh, they have spoken. When last have using an R D P house in, in Katalopele been built there at Durnescale? Or a contractor been born in Durnescale? Only a contractor. They take boys, well, he burns, he contracts from Apinten. We know them, we, we see them. I'm also a contractor. But it's just because, uh, I'm not a greedy individual. We see those things. Uh, people are empowering people on behalf of the community and the community is becoming very angry. They are becoming very angry. And I hope the minister who the president will appoint, he will work in our favor as Katalopele and Sanzabana municipality. Because it won't help. Uh, even my brother is lying now in the hospital here in Apinten. He've got, uh, that, uh, fee, what, what? I can't speak his illness. But we can visit him. He is like an outcast to us. Because Apinten is far. I must use three thousand run just to come and visit him here at the hospital. So please, free us from Apinten. Thank you.
Uh, number six.
Goei mora, goei mora, leisteraars, parliamentsleden. Ek is Inna Markus, kia garri. Weekeen Ograbis. Weekeen is twee plekke. A lake in Ograbis. Ebel het weet. Kan hela nie elkine opalasse. Eie, a week weesie. Tussen die twee plekke is nog een plek me shant. Tussen a lake in Ograbis is me shant. Die populatie van Ograbis is meer as tijsen. Nou wil ik net hoor of Ograbisie a week opse eie kan weesie. Die tweede ene keer is. Ek din op die wijkskomiteer, op die kliniekkomiteer, Ograbis. Ah, ah, ah. Ek wil hoor waar kan een mens ansoek het doen vir rijstoel. Want ons het nou van twintig twintig af, per een veertienjarige gestremde mensie kan rijstoel ansoek het doen. Ons krijg geen anwoordenie, geen terugvoeringie. Heidiglik op Ograbis sit ons nou met een groot probleem. Ons heet nie een kliniek sister daarin. Een kliniek sister daarin. Daar kom maar mensen wat voor ons kom afloog. En Ograbis, uh, bedien, Ograbis zelf, Nodonsies, Roipad, Fredes van Lee, Skydrift en Blauwbits. Is een groot plek in e. Hela weet mos die boer, die boeret nou helaas een mensen ingebreng. So die kliniek is, is prokvol. En is van maandag tot vrijdag. En die hospital anvaar nie voor ons as jij die ambulancepil daarin, as jy nie bij die kliniek wasie. Nou, die, die mensen, die werkers daar kan nie voor jou verwijs. Hospital toe nie, want die sister moet mos dat teken. Okakamas het net een ambulance? Wat moet paaienplekke in, 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 in Kakaas moet bedien. So my beruw is wat ek vraag. Of daarie kan ambulance? En Ograbis, as onderwiel Ograbis, so paaienplekkik is het wat ie moet bedien. Oh, uh, uh, ambulance kom staan bij die police stationie. Ons heet al anspraak gedoen voor dit, maar ons, dat het op doeënore gefal. So laat die ambulance daar is, heidiglik len nou is daar op Ograbis meer as vijf leke as gevolg van wat bij die haisgesteer wat. As gevolg van ambulancepil dan is die ambulance in Apinten. Die een ambulance van Kakaas in Apinten? Of hij is Bloemfontein toegerei of hij is Kimberley toe. So as e hela kan je daar voor ons kijk. Wat kan e hela daar doen? Om net misskien verkaak mos, hospital meerder ambulances gee. En paaien dankie voor die parliamentsleden wat uitgekommet om nou ons probleem te kom leester. And I thank you.
Good day. My name is, um, Inna Markus. I'm from, uh, Ograbis. Ward one, annual two. There are two places in ward one and two, and they are, they are very big. So there is, um, a lake in Ograbis. These are two places. But secondly, um, I serve on the clinic, uh, on the kliniekkomitee as well. I want to know where can one apply for wheelchairs? Because we have a, a, a little girl, um, who needs a wheelchair and we are unable to assist. So we, I need to know where do we apply for wheelchairs so that we are in a position to help her? Now, Ograbis and Nodonsies, these are very wide places and those hospitals are always very full. And the hospitals do not accept you if you come through the, if you come, uh, by using the ambulances. Now, um, we have one ambulance in Kakaas. So we request that you assign one ambulance that can even go and park at the, at the South African, at the South African police station just for us to have access at the Ograbis. And currently, we have five bodies that are lying there due to lack of ambulance services. So I would like to thank, um, the members of parliament for coming down and listening to our plan. I thank you.
Thank you, number seven.
Goei mora. Weet de, ek al lees dat die demarcation bill, dat klingt nou amper soos aparteit van daarie jaar. Dus een division, dus een verdeeltijd. Dat bevoordelie enen en benadeelie anderene. As ik nou kijk, daar is een paar municipalityt dat misskien zal wegval. Dieer demeka, die, uh, afbakeningswet. En dan gaan dat, die ander bevoordel en die ander benadeel. Dat, dat klinkt nie voor mij na een goeie ding nie. Is goed dat die hierin gekommet om dit, te kom leester na ons schriwe. Maar soos dat voor mij lik, lik het mij dat is nie. Een voordel of een nadeel in dit ei. As ik nou kijk na die municipalityt dat misskien zal zelf wegval, je zal zien, soos ik omreë. Van groblees hoop af is dat net winjaas. Ons maak ons leven, ons bestaan, bestaan uit weinheid. Is net sekere mensen wat kan werkre daar. Onze jeugd kan nie werkre nie. So, dus al waar ons het bestaan is wein. Die mijne wat cel honderd kilos, honderd en zestig kilos van ons af is. As die hieri afbakeningswet on verb sal dieer gaan, dan gaan Apinten word uit hieri afbakening. En dat zal beteken En dit zal beteken dat ons jong al reeds onder werk sit, dat is een paar wat werk, glad nie werkre nie. En as je zien dat die mine, as helle advertier voor werk, dan zal helle say daar Postmasburg of Kuruman of daardie plekke, halek rey voordel. Diezelfde gebeur as jy vir beerse aansoek doen voor jou kinders met klaas school gemaakte, dan vraal helle dat voor daarie plekke se kinders moet aansoek doen. Helle alleenle krey deel. En dan Uppington en om ligt hede wordt dan uitgesleid. Wat verkeerd is, dit klinkt nou al later emper soos aparteit. Soos een floekwoord, later zal die afbakening as een floekwoord bestaan. Ons mensen word benadeel. Diezelfde wat in Gatalopele gebeur, gebeur ook in Uppington. Ons hij mensen, umtrent 23 jaar geleden was hier hijse gebouw. Hier word die hijse gebouw, ons mensen blij al tot hier na nie Namibia se pad. Ons kan ook say dit is in the southwestern township so so wet toe. Ons centis trek al tot bij de grens van Namibia. So lik dit hier so. En dit is omdat daar nie hijse gebouw word he. Ons parlement, vooral ons ministers van Beisem en die verschillende portefiliars, helle zal moet ons districte, ons provinces zal helle moet besook en in eerste hand se onderfinning opdoen en leester na ons klachtis. Je so baie klachtis wat die demokation board met vandaag antwoor, wat nie endlich deel uitmaak van helle besook nie. Maar ons mensen se harte loop oor van probleme. As hier een persoon kom van parlement of van die regering, dan stort helle harte uit en helle moet leester na al hieri klachtis. So hieri demokation board of hieri afbakeningsboard zal moet baie goed denk as helle hieri wets en verb laat die er gaan en hieri afbakenings. Want ons is nou al later verdeeld, ons staan al tegen elkaar, je zal hoor van Brein Gemeenschap en die Kosa Gemeenschap en die Namme Gemeenschap. Ons is nou later in een gevech onder elkaar dieer die afbakeningsboard. So is zal moet baie goed denk wat ie doen. Ons kijk ons mensen van meer, helle is 200 en iets kilometers hier vandaan, maar helle word ingesleid hier so. Bij hierdie debat waar, helle kan zelf kijk na helle zelf. Daar Gatalopelesse mensen moet Uppington toe bel voor een ambulance. Je zal moet baie goed kijk en ie besleide te zal ie moet baie goed heroorweeg. Baie dankie.
Good afternoon. This demokation bill sounds to me like an apartheid causing division because the one will be advantaged and the other one will be disadvantaged. And this doesn't sound nice to me at all. It's a good thing that you came down to listen to our people's hearts. But this is not going to benefit us. When we look at Groberesdal, it's a vineyard area, it's a wine farms that are there. And what happens is the people need jobs and people just do not get work there. So the only work that is there is vineyards. And people have to travel 160 kilometers just to get work. And this, if this bill goes through, the people will, the only people that will benefit from this, oh, no, Uppington will be disadvantaged. We look at the mines, if the mines advertise positions, the people from Kuruman and the area, and the surrounding areas, they are excluded. So this sounds to me like an apartheid demokation system. And if it goes through, if we, if the people hear of demokation, later on, demokation will be like a cursed word. It is true what the former speakers have said that in 23 years, we have not seen RDP houses built here. And our shacks have been stretched and they are almost next to Namibia. And it is a good thing that the parliament, that the members of parliament have come to visit. And we would urge them to come and visit the districts to familiarize themselves with the issues that are taking place on ground level. And as you hear, our people are overwhelmed with the problems. So when they face members of parliament, they want to give all the problems that they are encountering. So if this board, this demokation board, they need to look deep into this before making their final decision. And as you can hear, people have been talking, but division has already been prevalent. And what we hear now, you hear about this side is the colors and that side is blacks. And this is not what we want. This bill is causing more an apartheid structure. Thank you.
Right.
Land melangyo buangyo ki Julia Teteeme from Katalopele. Halu kan chabelam o de baling, moud clause number thirty-five of the ball. I balakayaan yaren. Of the clause thirty-five of the ball must only consider the number of voters per ward particularly in the context of rural areas where their population is sparse, climbing villages that are far apart from each other into single wards, industries, representations and delivery of service. Wat jou moet dimut, kusabereki kuruna ki trubaburok. En appo ZF M kipalur hulule yano. Because of kushitlik Anu hapili runa san taner really basha. Has since ki edite school, ki naanaki naal, eight years ki edite gas school. Hasunki ki bereki hopi, ki kri libuk brubakan netso. And unemployment de kuruna. I leader moe li, i leader la basha, bakuruna moe lon koring. Baie kusying because of tlala. Kusakunuku itre la siose wena, kusi batlen baemuku wena self. Haruna di police venne, haruna di ambulance. Hakibakwa kliniki chonzucho from koo kidula nten kusloaya, kitza maeki, kuto ropon. Hakitzena ku af tatuwa was kipita wa wat haku na di pil. Batu baruna bashua kuwa because of poor services enue. Norifiti na kuwe telele ki kupalur trugelen. Amen.
Good afternoon. My name is Julia Teteeme from Katalopele. I would like you to focus again on clause number thirty-five. The challenges that we have is that one of youth, unemployment. That one really is a pain on our necks. I have completed school about eight years ago. I go hungry, I have never been employed. The other thing is that we don't have police vans, we don't have ambulances. Even if we go to the clinics, there are no medications. Thank you very much.
Number nine.
Goei amora. Ek is Sarah Snayman van wijk vierteen, David Krepper. My eerste punt sal wees, ek stem nie samen met die baling. Ek stem nie samen met die baling, want die baling ons in die verleren ook seer gemaak. Dus waar die councillor say, see kop is door, see sterde is door en see licham is door. Ons is deel van dit. So ons het al reeds met units wat weit van elkaar af is, wat die raatslid moet bedien. Nou, moet ie nog, daar is twee straten ook en los veel moet ie ook gaan doen in wijk vier, in wijk vijf. So die baling ons seer gek maak en ek stem nie samen met die baling. Baie dankie.
Good afternoon, members of parliament. My name is Sarah Snayman and I am from Ward fourteen, David Krepper. My first point is that I do not agree with this bill because this bill has been, has got past history with us and it hurt us in the past. Like the councillor before us said, you know, your head is there, your tail is there, your arm is here, your leg is there. So this, the ward members have to stay here and then service two roads down the road, a different ward and there. It's all mixed up. So all I wanted to say today is that, no, it can't be like this. It's all mixed up, it hurt us in the past, so please, we can't accept it. Thank you.
Straight to the point. Oh, sorry. Yeah, so the issue they want to move from ZF to JTG. We have a challenge. I would like firstly, I would like to say hori ke itume la, my councillor baruna baile koring, ba busyka engagement tele, the community. And then ba di rile, and Lena was part of them as a community member. So you kwa loe kwa guaranteea hori. Say community at Zanzabane si bua. I say say ba twa onpa si bua. Hori must move from ZF to JTG. Why ki bua yana? People baba buangyalo ke lo koring ke ba iti zambari ki de consent. They don't want to listen to their leaders. So everyone knew yano wat akunali da. That's why akunali taka taka yana. Bakunuku bonaya la, baba na di mine ni dit sumla diu kola kota Zanzaban. So they want to be rich kana kuwe kujwan. En han gitakwa na ha. Ki mora kwenle sa ro bolani en kate. So aba alawe our leaders bari leader until until Mungulima kriya se chonza se kriya montafuli. So rakopakachwe chwe aral so kudira distinct political issues. Respect your leader. Nakuesi selite ngulwe nana kuwa kyetla, luwe noto kwayama ala do kus respect. So kaitchwele ela kere JTG harree, harree because of challenges sedi kwa tele. Let me, kere 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 bele, e wane ela mu 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 tille. JTG is vast. JTG ki plekke tonat otan ale makasi amants. Postmani ninyan. Postman is too small more JTG. Mar JTG, ha kunuku itela komakasinamang because of a family liko koko Kuruman. That's why kina kinal experience for that because of kinal family liko Kuruman. So family yamea complain hori. For an example, ek edale family liko bo Pepsi Lexi. It's almost 300 kilo's from town. So those people, they are suffer. Haba chwane teba kriye ambulance se kana ko ke chotlero. Haba chwane teba kriye se politikal mode akko ke chotlero. Compared to postmasberg, renale the same challenge. But last, last year, honu na li engagement ya, renale the district ya rona. So retraa ko plena distinct ya, hori ka kriya yang distinct right hori so, resakla resokala ambulance se monta Zanzaban. And then hona li di, renale, even renale di retopile, retopile di committee se lo koring diah di lakada issues. So reasonably, retopso tama tataa outi. Kere JTG harree, restia mon ZF. Amanda.
The name is Lesekho Morue. He greeted members. He is from a place called Zanzabane. So he is here and then he's so relaxed because he's gonna express himself in his own mother tongue. So the problem that is being experienced here is that some people don't expect, don't respect leadership. Everybody wants to be a leader and we are at work working with our fellow councillors. So what we are saying, we say, we not going to ZF, JTG, JTG. Thank you, thank you. They say, pambil with JTZ, JTG. I think I confuse that. They are remaining with ZF, not JTZ. And then one other thing is that they shouldn't politicize the whole thing because they are working hand in hand with their leaders so that at the end of the day, it will be the communities that must benefit from the whole exercise. See, he has that experience because he has a family that is complaining about the place that they are staying at. At the end of the day, things like the clinic facilities and the police services, they don't have that. But they are busy now with the committees that will help them so that at the end of the day, it will be the committees that will benefit at the end of the day. Thank you so much. That if I cause the confusion somewhere.
Madam.
Goei amora almal. Ek is motama is klaif manera van Postmasburg. Die grootste muzda bekamper in Postmasburg. Mensa kom staan ook hier, wat kom hoor ook van dat ons kom val onder Kuruman. Daar is dat die gebeurie mensen, want de Kurumansse mensen sikkel. Nie bikini, daar is stormlokatis in Kuruman wat sikkel. Postmasburg, ik het iemand gehoori pruaf van draakse, ik het so baie gelekkige ik akre want ek vechtien daj goeders ook. Van draak is a probleem, rengar mensen bij onze kinders. Voornaar blij Postmasburg is die grootste kriminale Nigerians solus wat onze kinders so opmars. En die ander ding mensen, ons het nie policie in Postmasburg nie. Policie, jamu ekke an di mayor se mayor. Ke hier is geen, hier is geen policie wese bal onse plekken. En say di mayor me motama wat saygi? Ek bel nou die station kommer Sarahs. En das dengar, meyer weraar mensen daar in Postmasburgen. Soos me yana bruugas say, die mensen wat eat, as die grootste ware. As je hoor, as a tender darso. Daar begin, wat je maak a groepikki op. Daar were na tiresan gebran, waar hij wat eat en hart op beweg, losse vergel, laat eni oni nosse dan kom. So die ding wat is kan teruggaan, onze leerse wat je ga leester in Postmasburgen. Die politik, hale wat politik, maar hale ken die politiki. Daare vertrappele onze leerse in Postmasburgen. Daare fraa ook die parliamenten, mensen wat hier is vandaag. Die onze leerse wat ga vertrap, nie bikini. Halle gerede daj kramse mensen kom leester en word, ay, geen storm. Hey, wat ken die ding wat politik? Maar die ding vadi onder die, hoe safika die mens wat yo liet, want die liet. Je ga liever leester erst, moe die mens vertrappi. Daare onze leerse in Postmasburg wat ga vertrap mensen en ek fraa se belief. Policie Postmasburg is fucked up. Halle was Kuruman to stier, bi die hau se plek. Vadi kom krije wat ga double in die dorp. Police bakis se race so open af, die mensen se poesse wat ga griep, die mensen wat ga ruw in die dorp, maar as policie hale doen naksie. So ba la die ding wat Postmasburgen kom doen. Amanda, os sali dan.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, community members of parliament. My name is Mutamai Hamery from Postmasberg. I'm the biggest crime buster and fighter in the whole of Postmasberg. I just want to say that I fight. I hurt people. There is Kuruman and that's a problem there. I just want to say and state it that I also fight against drugs criminals. That's my thing. Our people, our children are being criminalized by Nigerians and Zulus and I fight them. I want to say that we have a problem, the same problems. People are being trampled on here. Don't listen to us, don't take us seriously. We don't have any police vans. You phone the state commissioner, there is no answer. Nobody answers you. People are hungry, they want to eat. Then you see someone is here, they politicize these things. But I just want to say that we have to fight against these things. And I really think that we have to fight it. The people from Kuruman, please, listen to us. It's always Kuruman people, Kuruman people, but we in Postmasberg have the same problems. Thank you.
We have allowed as many people as is possible to speak. This is what is called public hearings, oral public hearings. The committee here in front were taking notes, but practically we have got officials who are listening, taking records.
Many people have listened to what they have done. And the committee that is here has taken notes. But we have also given people the opportunity to listen.
And for us, we will have our turn to discuss all the issues that we have raised when we get to parliament in September.
And for us, we have used our opportunity to listen. We are going to create our opportunity, where all these points have been mentioned, we are going to talk about it when we come to parliament.
So this is a listening session on our part.
So here was a listening session from our side.
But we just want to raise two, three things. One.
We didn't hear anything.
Demarcation board. The current demarcation board is still working.
The current election board is still working.
In other words, the current law, which is Law 27 of 1998, is still functioning.
So the current law is still in 1998, it is still being adopted.
We are not the demarcation board here, we are a portfolio committee.
We are not the election board, we are the committee of portfolios.
But you are not the first ones to raise concerns about demarcation.
But you are not the first ones who have mentioned the election board.
So we have noted all the issues that we have raised and they will be referred to the demarcation board.
But we have all the points recorded and it will be referred to the election board.
But we could not stop you from talking.
But we could not stop or stop talking.
The general concern might be that you are not speaking much on the bill.
The general point is that we haven't said much about the legislation. The legislation.
They appeal that you are still free to make submissions until the 29th of August. Then applies.
So the request is that you can still do the 29th of August.
But it equally applies to the parliamentary staff to say, we judge whatever that you have been doing from the inputs that we get from the public.
But from the committee's side, we listen to everything that is presented.
So we can improve on public education.
We have heard and we can improve on open dialogue.
We also noted that, well, it's just comments that we are coming, we are not responding, where you say this bill is going to take us back to the apartheid days.
We have heard your comments and we know that the comments here that this legislation puts us back to apartheid era.
That's a misreading of what we are coming about here. We are saying from our previous experiences of the demarcation process, we have learned some lessons. We want to improve on what we have learned.
That's a misunderstanding, that puts us back to apartheid era. We want to improve on the old apartheid, on the old practice. Election process.
My last point would be it's good that you can associate the demarcation with service delivery.
My last point is good that you can associate this in the election and the service delivery.
Obviously, we demarcate so that people can be served better.
Of course, we should election so that it can be better done or done.
The last point is with this proposed bill.
The last point is with this proposed legislation.
We want to involve everybody from the ground. It must not come from a helicopter picture drawn by somebody in Pretoria. We want it to come from the ground.
We want all of this legislation, we want all of it to be from the ground. We don't want helicopters flying from above to work.
So by the time this bill becomes law, then that is when you are going to understand how are you getting involved.
If this legislation is better, then we will understand.
But as already indicated, from here, we're going to DR.
Since the Yifan, we are going to the A. The A.
No, it's fine. I am going to learn as well how best to pronounce it.
That's very good. I will learn later.
We are going there as part of these public hearings in the northern Cape.
We are going there as part of the open dialogue in the northern Cape.
If there are any other areas that might say you have gone only to two places, I've said the NCOP, when their term comes, they are still going to do the same that we are doing.
Other areas where we have not visited, such as the NCOP, will also be further. The National Rat for Provinces will be further.
We are saying thank you very much for attending.
Anderson, thank you for coming.
You were better than the three areas that we went to.
He was better than the other three areas where we visited.
And I think as well, because we are also public representatives.
And I think also that we are open for words.
It is always good to listen to people when they speak whatever issues because we are part of government, we are public representatives.
It is always good to listen to what people say because we are part of the government.
So we have noted some of the issues we will raise with the relevant executives. When I say executives, it might be president and cabinet, it might be premier and emissaries, it might be councils.
As I said, the points that have been mentioned will bring us to the relevant parties, it can be the president, it can be the leaders of parliament, it can be the councillors, the rats.
Otherwise, thank you very much, the session is adjourned.
Thank you very much.